Okay, as the time is 6:40, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to everybody at the meeting, those watching on TV and those participating via Zoom or watching on Facebook Live. Once again, I'm invoking the provisions of RSA 91A:23B. And as such, the meeting will be conducted without a quorum of the body physically present in the same location. We do ask that all of you who from the public will be making comment tonight be reminded that even though the meeting is being conducted in this unique manner, under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. And we appreciate your ongoing patience as we maneuver our meetings virtually. Please note that all votes will be taken during the meeting via roll call. I will start by introducing the select board, and if you would, please indicate whether you are alone in the room, and if not, if you could just indicate who's in the room with you. I apologize to you this evening. Our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, will not be able to join us. However, we do have a quorum with the four members who are with us tonight. And I'll start by introducing Selectwoman Lovey Rountree Olaf. Good evening.
Good evening. I am here alone in my home.
Great, thank you. Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan.
Hi, everybody. I'm home alone, too.
Good evening, Molly. And Selectman Brown?
On Water Street, but alone.
Great. And I am Nico Papakostindis, Chair of the Select Board, and I'm here home alone. With us is Town Manager Rustine, our Recording Secretary Joanne Bartelli, and also esteemed department staff will be joining us throughout the meeting. Our first order of business this evening is we have two board interviews that we will conduct prior to getting into the regular agenda. The first will be for an open position on the REC Advisory Committee. And with us tonight with this application is Mr. Connor Berry. And Connor, I think we interviewed you just a couple of months ago, and I've been enjoying the work you've been doing on the Communications Committee. So I feel like we know you well, but I'd like to give the other members of the Select Board an opportunity to get to know you a little bit. If you could give us just a brief intro and...
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to. Thank you. I'm the gift that keeps on giving, I guess. But thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you very well, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much again, and thank you to the entire board for the opportunity to apply for this open position and speak about it. Yeah, as the chairman alluded to, I met, I think, some of you when I interviewed back for the open position on the Communications Advisory Committee. That was a few months ago, pre-COVID. And I've actually had the pleasure of working with Selectman Brown for the few meetings that we've had on that committee. So it's good to see you all again and see that you all are well. Just by way of introduction, I've been a resident here with my fiancee for the last year or so, actually coming up on about 13 months. We've really fallen in love with the town. We're actively recruiting everyone we know who is in the market for buying homes to look here. It's just been so hospitable, and the quality of life is so high. And I know in many ways that parks and recs are the heart and soul of any town, and I know that the high-quality programming we have here is one of the things that makes Exeter so desirable. I also think we can't discount the importance in particular of outdoor activities for the physical and mental well-being of everyone, not just Exeter's children, but people of all ages, as we modify our lives and do our part in this pandemic. So I'm very interested in contributing to that. We're in it here in town for the long haul, so perhaps one day our own children will make use of the Parks and Recreations programming. I certainly hope that they do, so I'm very invested in that and invested in its future. My professional experience, for the past four and a half to five years, I've been a regulatory compliance analyst for an insurance company that's based in Boston. The company writes insurance policies in three states, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Maine. So what I do most broadly defined is I interface with the relevant state regulators in all of these jurisdictions. I try to ensure that our business is complying with either existing or new state laws, regulations, or even court decisions. I don't have much professional experience in parks and recreations, but I know just I've done a little research. I've dug into the agendas of some prior meetings of the Advisory Committee. I listened to a few minutes of the last recorded meeting of that committee. I know there was really, just for instance, a big process in getting a lot of the summer programming off the ground in this environment. Everything we do is so contingent these days on funding and on state guidelines. And I know that a lot of the programming really only exists this summer because they had to apply to receive a designation as an emergency childcare program, and that I know there are grant applications for additional funding that are pending. That kind of work and those sorts of projects seem to overlap with what I do as far as trying to comply with state guidelines, so I think I could contribute in that way. But I also recognize that the role I applied for is a non-voting member on the committee. So more than anything, I think just as a newer resident to town, I'm interested in listening and learning and benefiting from all of the institutional knowledge that's already there with all of the ongoing projects and see if I can find a way to best contribute moving forward. I mean, if there's anything specific that the board would like me to address, I'm happy to do that. I don't know if there are any additional questions, but generally speaking, I'm very happy to be volunteering. I've always been a firm believer that you can't really complain if you're not engaged. And there's certainly not a lot to complain about in the town of Exeter, but I think everything can be improved upon, and so I'm trying to get engaged in any way that I can.
Great, thank you, Connor, and thank you for your volunteerism so far. We're looking forward to working with you additionally in the future. Vice Chair Cowan is actually the Select Board Rep to the REC Advisory Committee, so I'll start with her if she has any questions or comments for you.
I don't know that I have any comments or questions. I remember your interview when we talked about the Communications Committee. I'm so glad that that's going well, and just really excited that you are signing up for more.
Great, thank you very much. Good to see you again.
Selectwoman Rountree Olaf, do you have any questions for Mr. Berry?
No, I think everything that you've said so far has sounded great, and you've got the support of other board members, so I'm happy to move forward.
Selectman Brown, I know you've worked with Connor on the Communications Committee.
Yep, and I was going to put my two thumbs up. I can definitely vouch for him as a productive committee member.
Fantastic.
Did you like the motion?
Well, we don't usually do that during the interviews, but I was going to say, Connor, we have one more interview, and then at our next meeting, August 10th, we will be taking up this appointment and the other, at which point you're welcome to join us on August 10th. It's one of the first few things on the agenda, or the Town Manager's Office can be in contact with you.
Great, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much. Our next interview is Jackie Ojala, who has applied for one of the open voting positions on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Jackie, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. How are you? Thank you for joining us tonight.
I'm doing well, thank you.
So I've reviewed your resume and your application, and I want to give you a couple of minutes to just speak about your experience and why you're interested in serving on the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for the rest of the board for having me here today. I'm interested in being a part of the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a few different reasons. I'm fairly new to Exeter. I've lived here for about a year, and I'm hopefully closing on a house in the next couple of weeks, so fingers crossed there. I have really loved living in Exeter and have just been looking for ways to get involved. I really think sustainability and focusing on the environment is really an important thing right now, and just I would love to find ways to make more of an impact there. It's something that I really work on in my personal life, and I think getting involved in a more, like a bigger way that could have a larger impact would be something I'm very interested in. As far as my professional experience, I'm not directly involved in sustainability right now. I work at a medical device company in Portsmouth where I speak with patients regularly who are using our device and help them troubleshoot through issues. And then we're very patient-focused, so we have a lot of pilots and different initiatives that I'm part of where we'll just try to come up with different ways to make the patient experience better. And then I take part in a lot of surveys and analyzing if we should move forward with these different pilot programs. As far as my education, I have a BS in biological sciences, so I do have a really scientific background. So anything where I needed to learn more, I feel confident that I would be able to read any papers, any scientific research on the subject, and be able to digest that to make an impact there. So that's kind of my experience, but happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Jackie. I'm the Select Board Rep to the Sustainability Advisory Committee and have been since its inception about a year ago now. So it's a relatively young committee. It's only been around for about a year, and we've had two open seats for a while, and I know they're really looking forward to filling those spots. One question I'm going to ask you is one that last year when we were interviewing for all seven positions, the first question that was asked, which I thought was a good one, is can you define, in your, just in your words, sustainability?
Yeah, so I think sustainability means to me, or what I think it would mean, would be really doing things in a way that won't have a negative impact on the future, where yes, just to not have a negative impact on the future.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Rountree Olaf, do you have any questions or Jackie?
Just one quick question. Obviously, you went to UVM, as I saw on your resume. I know a lot about UVM in terms of the more environmentally friendly initiatives that take place there. Were there any particular projects that you worked on, whether through your graduation program or anything personally that you did on campus that might have prepared you well for this position?
Sure, so I wasn't really directly involved in organizing any initiatives on campus. We did a lot of composting, and I tried to take part in that personally as much as I could, but I wasn't directly involved in organizing anything there. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Rountree Olaf. Selectman Brown, do you have any questions for Jackie tonight?
I don't. I'm just really appreciative for the more people on that committee, so I think it's headed in a great direction, and this is just happy.
Thank you. Vice Chair Selectwoman Cowan.
Sure. So, welcome to town. I hope you close on your house soon. It's really exciting, and I'm always so encouraged and excited when young people volunteer for town service. You know, the volunteers for this town really are what drive the town, and so thank you so much for volunteering. A couple of questions. Have there been anything that you can point to in terms of the committee work that you would...
I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit there. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, sure. I was just going to ask you if there's anything that you would be really interested in focusing on with the committee, things that you've worked on in the past or a direction you want to take with the committee.
Yeah, absolutely. So I listened to some of the last recording meetings, recorded meetings, where they were going over some of the gap analysis, and I thought one of the interesting things that was brought up was getting more involved with the already active town Facebook page and getting some communication out to the town that way, just like in a page that's already really active. I think that would be something I'd be interested in, as well as it was brought up. I'm very interested in composting. I think that's important, so I think that would be a good direction to go as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie, and we will be taking up your appointment at our next meeting, which is August 10th. And again, you're welcome to join us. It's usually one of the first few things on the agenda, or if not, the Town Manager's Office. But thank you so much for your interest, and I know I'll look forward to working with you.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, moving into our regular Select Board agenda, the first order of business, I had the pleasure probably a week and a half ago of meeting with our Town Moderator Paul Scafidi and our Town Clerk Andy Kohler to talk about the two upcoming elections that we have, the general election in November and more immediate, the election on September 8th. And Town Moderator Scafidi has been meeting virtually, I believe, with other Town Moderators and the Secretary of State, and he has a lot to run by us. He has pretty robust update. He's going to let us know how the elections are going to, how they're going to be physically different for those that show up at the polls. And he's also going to encourage people, I believe, to reach out and request absentee ballots. But I'm going to turn it over to him if he's ready.
He's ready. Nico, can you hear me?
We can, Paul. Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate it. I had you on my laptop. Doesn't seem to be working. You guys kept going in and out.
We see and hear you fine.
Okay, I'm a little dark, and I apologize, but I appreciate the board letting me come over today, talk today about this problem. And as everybody knows, I'm the Town Moderator for Exeter, and as my duties as moderator, I lost you again.
So we can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me. I can't see you, though. I'm just having a problem with issues up here. Hold on.
There he goes. Should we just have Paul call in rather than do the...
Yeah, he was going well until he...
Yeah, but both of his connections died. You haven't connected just yet, Paul. Now we can't hear him.
How about now?
Perfect.
All right, sorry about that. I'm trying to do, I'm trying to work with the state and Andy Kohler, our Town Clerk, to have...
Oh, Paul.
I know.
Okay. Do that there.
No, I'm getting yelled at from all sides here.
We're not yelling at you.
That's a home problem, Paul. That's not on us.
She was in the other room, but now she was watching it on Facebook, and so forget about it. Okay, anyway, let's see if I can start this over again. We've been in contact with the Secretary of State, and we're having two more seminar, webinar meetings. Hopefully, they go better than this one this week, on Wednesday and Thursday, one with Dr. Chan and one with the Secretary of State, about more information that we can get out to the public about how we're going to handle voting in September and November. The biggest item that we can't stress enough, and you touched on it briefly, is absentee ballots. We're pushing absentee ballots because it's just going to be the safest way for all of us to vote in September and November. What's that? So what I'm asking everybody to do, to go online to the Town Clerk's website to get an absentee ballot request, or go to the Town Clerk's office and get an absentee ballot request, fill it out, send it back, and she will mail all those that want an absentee ballot in time to get them sent back in time, so we can all vote by absentee ballot, which will be the safest for all of us. Because I'm looking at this from two ways. We have to protect the voter, we have to protect the poll worker, and we have to protect our families. And the easiest and simplest way of doing this is going to be by absentee ballots. Second, if you do want to come to the polls, we'll be at the Talbot Gym at the old high school, the SST building, and what we're going to do is we're going to have to social distance, everybody. So if you're going to be waiting in line, you're going to have to be six feet apart from everybody. Yep, that's going to be a long day and a long process for everybody. There's going to be no exceptions to this. So from the time you come into the building to vote backwards, you're going to be six feet apart. The line can just going to get very long. If we have the people that showed, if we have the amount of voters that showed up last time we had it, in 2016, we had over 7,500 voters show up. So figure if everybody showed up and had to be six feet apart, how long that line's going to be. Again, absentee ballots will make this a lot easier for all of us. The second thing that we're going to be doing is that when you go to the voting booth, you can't, we can't use every voting booth. We have to social distance in the voting area. So every, out of the 10 booths that are going to be in a row, there will be a separation of two booths from every one. So it's only going to be four booths in each row open, so it's going to take a little bit longer to vote because social distancing. So that's going to take time. There will be no curtains on the voting booths. There'll be curtains around the booth, but you know, the blue and red and white, blue stripe curtain, that will not be on because they don't want anybody, they don't want people touching the curtains as they go in, so we kind of take the curtains down. Now comes the fun part. You cannot bring in any type of water or hand sanitizers. We don't want you to bring them in. We will have plenty of hand sanitizers after you vote, but because hand sanitizers can get the ballots wet, and if the ballots go through the machine when they're wet, they will jam the machine like we had in March, because some people got the sanitizer on the ballot, jammed them up. We lost two of the three machines. It backed everything up. So please, no hand sanitizers. You will be given, when you come into the, see the ballot clerk, they will be behind Plexiglas. They will be wearing masks. They can wear face shields if they want to. We will have gloves for them as well. You will be asked to give your name, and you're going to have to speak a little bit louder this time because the Plexiglas is going to be between you and the ballot clerk. So you're going to have to speak up. When you're asked for an ID, which is normally your driver's license, you're going to have to physically put it up against the plastic so they can see it. We don't want the ballot clerks handling your driver's license. So that's going to take a little extra time. Then you will be given a pen. There are no pens in the booths. You will be given an individual pen that will be yours. You will take the pen into the voting booth, you will mark the ballot, and when you leave, you take the pen with you. Now, you can keep it if you want to. We will have receptacles to throw them away, but there'll be a pen for everybody. We're going to get, right now, it looks like in the vicinity of 8,000 pens we will be giving out. So realize that when you go to the booth. Don't bring anything. Don't leave it there. We don't want anybody touching it. The next thing is when you're given the ballot to vote, you'll be given the ballot plus another envelope, they're calling it. And what it is, is it's an eight-by-14 envelope. The ballot's eight-by-11. You will take that envelope, you will open it up, you will lay it on the metal counter in the voting booth. You will then take the ballot and put it on that opened envelope. You will now mark your ballot with the pen. After that is done, you will close the envelope. You will take the envelope with the ballot and with about four inches of the ballot sticking out of the top. You will then go to the voting machine. You will slip the envelope into the top of the voting machine till it grabs the ballot and takes the ballot out of the voting envelope and takes it and goes through the machine. From that point, you will now take that envelope with you, with the pen, and you will leave the voting area. So has everybody got what I'm trying to do? We're going to go over this a couple more times before September, but I'm just giving you a heads up on how this is all going to shake out. It's going to be a long process. It's going to be a long learning curve for us all to make sure this all works properly because, again, we're worried about the voter, we're worried about the ballot clerks, and we're worried about our families. So we all got to take care. Lovey, you have a question?
Just a real quick question, and I don't know if it's been discussed, and perhaps you'll get to it. Can we do a mock video showing exactly how the process is going to work and show that video as people wait in line? Because I hate to say it, but there's only so much people can process, and you lost me at the free pen. So I think we might want to do a visual representation for those who may have difficulties knowing all the steps, because we're going to be here until probably 4:00 a.m. voting.
Don't argue with that at all, because right now, the state is anticipating 33% of people will absentee ballot, and absentee ballots alone, if there's 33% of registered voters in Exeter show up, will be opening 4,000 absentee ballots.
Yeah, so...
Which will take forever.
Thankfully, we have enough time to brainstorm some future methods to educate our town members on how we're going to go through the process, but I think it's important that we just keep pushing the message that if people can absentee ballot, that would be the greatest gift ever to not just your friends, family, but Select Board members who have to be there.
Oh, yeah. And to be honest, there's going to be weekly webinars with the state on all of this. I've already talked to Exeter TV about when we set up the booths, because it's a holiday, don't forget, it's a holiday weekend, so we can't work Monday, the 7th. So we're going to have to set up the voting area on Friday, the 4th, or the 3rd, or whatever, 4th, 5th, 4th, yeah, 3rd. And what I'm going to do is take Exeter TV, and we're literally going to walk through the way we want this all to shake out, and then put it on Facebook, Exeter TV, Channel 22, whatever. So we're going to try to do that as best we can, but this literally is going to be changing. Again, the next time I talk to you, there'll be new rules and regulation, something, somehow, somewhere, people will change something, and that's what's going to happen. So that's how the voting process is going now. When I'm asking, we're going to, hopefully this works out, when you leave the voting booth and leave the building, instead of going back out the atrium where everybody is going to be standing in line, there will be a doorway. I believe there's a doorway when you walk out. You can walk straight ahead and go outside. I'm going to see that if we can make this work, you will leave the building that way. When you get out, you take a left, you walk around the building, but you come out to the parking lot anyway. So that's what I'm going to try to do to keep people from crisscrossing out in the atrium, because it's going to be enough people waiting in line out in the atrium as it is. The one question, the one issue that has not been fully discussed to find a way to do it is wearing a mask and not wearing a mask. I can't, and I can't stress enough, I want everybody to please wear a mask. If you're coming to vote, wear the mask. We can't mandate you, we can't force you to wear a mask, but all I'm asking is that everybody realize what a mask is going to do to make this a lot easier for everybody. Some towns had a voting in June, and they separated once people came into the voting area and voted, but it's a very small town. They have 600 registered voters. And if you had a mask, you went to the right. If you didn't have a mask, you went to the left, you voted, and then you left. So that way, their people weren't, what they said, crossing each other. I don't know how we're going to handle that right now, because I don't know who's going to show up with a mask and who's not going to show up with a mask. We have some thoughts about it, but we're not sure... We have some thoughts about it, but we're not sure it can be done in a, on a legal basis or any basis. So we haven't heard anything from the state about how we're going to do the mask, no mask. There are going to be, like I said, plastic in front of, there's going to be shields in front of each ballot clerk's table. There's going to be shields in front of the supervisor of the checklist. The machines are going to be in front of a table, behind the machines is going to be Plexiglas. And that's where the people watching the ballots go into the machine are going to be. So we're going to have that type of division between the voter. And usually it's the select people that are out there watching people vote or whoever. But we know our machines are old. Some of them are, one of them is at least twenty years old. They jam up, so you're going to have to walk around. You're going to have to have people step back. And this is going to be a long process. And everybody's going to have to really have a lot of patience on all of this to make this work. Because if not, you're going to have a lot of ticked off people and I'm just really not wanting to do this. If we're going to have that type of an issue, we all get to get on the same page about making this work. And making it understand, and making everybody understand what the process is going to be. Again, you can vote absentee. I'm going to press it again. I'm going to press it two or three more times before I get off. Take, take the time to go on the website, get on the town clerk's page. Go to the, get, uh, registration for absentee ballot, says COVID beside it. Anybody can do it. You don't have to have a special reason. COVID is your special reason to get an absentee ballot. Print it out, mail it to the town clerk's office. They'll register you, they'll send you an absentee ballot. It's as simple as that. Then you can mail the absentee ballot to the town clerk. You can bring the absentee ballot to the town clerk. You can actually bring the ballot, the absentee ballot to the voting area. And give it to somebody at the voting area by five o'clock on Tuesday, the eighth. So it's, even though you're there, you can just hand it to somebody. We're going to try to have people outside in different areas, so if people want to drive by, they can hand it to somebody and we can check them off. If you have an issue with showing up and you don't want to go into the voting area. We have to have somebody there in a gown, in a face shield, in a mask, in gloves, that can bring you a ballot while you sit in your car. And that can be done, that's legal, that's who, I've done it in the past. Where somebody has an issue, they can't get out of the car to vote, I bring the ballot to them, we get it checked in. We do the same process, but that again is just going to make it even longer. So please, absentee ballots, I can't stress it enough. Now, like, like I said, um, we're going to have no sanitizers, no water. The ballot gets wet, we're going to hopefully see it before you try to push it through, so you don't jam the machine up. I talked about the folder. Um, I talked about no curtains. Uh, there'll be no I voted stickers given out. People like them. We understand that, but we don't want people handing it from one person to another person. So they're, they're letting us make that decision about the voting, I voted stickers. I don't think we're going to do them this year, at least for the September ones, just because of the issues that are going to happen. Um. Uh, I think that's about covered the voting part of it. This is what we're going.
If I could jump in real quick before you jump to the next thing, Selectwoman Cowan had a question, uh, her hand's been up for a while, so.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you have a question? Thank you so much for all of the work you're doing to keep us all and our voters safe. Um, I wanted, I've been getting this question already myself. Um, can you walk through the process of how we do not have an open primary? So you will need to tell the clerk when you apply for your absentee ballot. If you want a Republican ballot or a Democratic ballot because we do not have an open primary.
Yep, no problem. On the apps, on the, uh, form that you'll get when you, uh, go to the town clerk or get online. It will ask you what, uh, it will ask you whether you're doing it for the primary. Or the presidential, and then it will ask you if you want a Republican ballot or a Democratic ballot. And you have to check off one. You can't check off two. You have to check off just one. Once that's checked off, that's the ballot you will receive. If you make a mistake, I'm not sure how you're going to handle that. If you checked Democrat and you meant Republican and you get a Republican ballot in your hand. You may want to call the town clerk about that one because I haven't heard anybody say, you know, oh, in normal cases. You don't get to change that ballot. You have to take what you get. So please make sure which party you're going to check off, how you're going to vote it. But it is on page two, I believe, of the registration form to get an absentee ballot.
And then my next question, Paul, so oftentimes what happens after the primary is voters will come and they'll, they'll have to select. A party to vote in the primary and then they'll want to go back to undeclared. Are we not going to have that option this time?
No, we are going to have that option. It's the undeclared table will still be there.
Got it, okay.
After they vote, if they want to go and go back to being undeclared, there will be a table set up, ready to rock and roll to do it. So just like in the past, primary only, because in the general elections, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, these are the items. Anybody else have a question?
Look clear, Paul.
Okay, uh, the one thing that Julie, uh, asked me about a week or so ago and, um. If you, if you, the normal electioneering prohibits any type of wearing of hats, buttons, T-shirts, jackets, signs. Whatever into the building. If you're outside, you can do it. The minute you step over the threshold through the glass doors. You have to take off anything that's electioneering related, no matter what. However, she asked if she could vote absentee ballot and yet stand outside and hold a sign for somebody. And that's not acceptable. If you're there all day, you have to make the effort to go inside and vote. Um, so just from the electioneering point of view. Once you drop off your absentee ballot or whatever, please, you have to leave the area. Because your vote is counted. So if you're going to do any electioneering, realize you can't come inside with the stuff. But if you're outside, you can't give me an absentee ballot and then stand there and hold a sign for somebody for the next eight hours. Because you have to win and vote like you normally would. So that's on that issue. Now here's the items. Um, I don't know if you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you received anything from the emergency, uh, management director about the, um, supplies today?
Chief, Chief Wilking did, yes.
Okay, you saw that? Okay, so I think it's August nineteenth. We are going to Concord to get all this, um, paraphernalia, uh, items, the PPE items. That we're getting from, uh, the state who is paying for all of the, uh, the items. Uh, what we are receiving is KN ninety-five masks, surgical masks. And those surgical masks, we are going to be giving out masks to voters who show up and say, I forgot my mask or I want a mask. We will have a mask for you. So that's also going to be happening. We're going to have clear plastic face shields. We're going to get gloves. We're going to have gowns. We are literally getting gallons of hand, uh, hand sanitizers. Uh, we're going to, uh, we're going to get small hand sanitizers. We're getting sneeze guards. We're getting sanitary wipes in jugs. We're getting Accessible Vote System One for All wipe, which is an alcohol wipe to sanitize the keypad, uh, keyboard. For, um, accessible voting system for the hearing impaired and so forth. We're getting disposable earphone covers. We're going to be giving everybody a pen or a pencil. Uh, if you're voting at the booth, you'll get a pen. So, uh, the pencil is if you want to vote absentee, you can use a pencil, but we're basically getting pens. We're getting social distancing signs. We're getting painters tape. We have to go out and mark every six feet. Uh, what's up, Lovey?
No, I just, I, I know that we're, I know we're doing a whole lot. I just want to make sure that, um, because not. Not the majority of the public is listening to this with the intention of knowing what to do for voting. Is there going to be a specific time, uh, Paul or Nico, where all of this information will be cohesive, confined? All, you know, detail oriented so that we can disseminate it to the public rather than just doing it sort of piecemeal here? Because I, I think we have the initial idea that it's going to be a whole lot different than what we're used to. And so I just want to make sure that, Paul, we, you know, use your time wisely so that you're not having to go too much into detail with. Only a party of five people listening, so to speak.
Yeah, this is one part of it. We, when we met a week and a half ago, uh, I invited Paul to come to every select board meeting between now and the election. Just to speak to this, um, at the top of every agenda. Additionally, you know, uh, Paul indicated, we talked about, and I know he's already met with Bob Glawacki, reaching out to Channel twenty-two to do. You know, a public service announcement, going over everything we're talking about and also perhaps doing a demo. Uh, as you suggested, this here's how the process goes, similar to what Russ did prior to reopening town office. Um, and then just run that, you know, ongoing on Channel twenty-two as well as Facebook Live. And any of our Facebook, um, you know, pages. Uh, we also talked about reaching out to Alex Lacass at the paper. Um, and, and Alex could run an article, maybe several articles, reminding people of, uh. You know, not only the process, but timeline. And that was a question, Paul, I was going to ask you earlier, you said you referenced on time and in time. And before you leave tonight, if you could just let the public know what the time deadlines are, uh, for requesting and getting in the ballots. Um, and then, you know, anything else, uh, Selectwoman Roundtree, all of that we can think of that Paul can do. To get that message out, but we thought that was a pretty good start, um, that way. Obviously the, um, the town webpage, if the town clerk can maybe put something on. Under the town clerk's, um, page, that would be helpful too.
No, that all sounds great. I just, I, that sounds perfect. I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to be the. One and only dissemination of information until prior to September, so.
No, the, the other thing, um. Where, because we're meeting with the state on a weekly basis, all the moderators and the town clerks. And the supervisors of the checklist, we're all meeting individually as groups, uh, with the state. Things are going to change. Um, that, that's, and when you literally ask the state, what about this? They'll, right now their standard answer is, we'll get back to you on it. And, you know, so we were wondering if we could separate mask, no mask for voting. And no one could give me a definitive answer and I was, I called the Secretary of State. They said, we're discussing that, we'll get back to you on it. And I think that's what's going to happen on Thursday's webinar with the Secretary of State's office. Wednesday's webinar, we're meeting with Dr. Chan, uh, who's the state, um, head of health. And he's going to give us all their thought process about keeping everybody safe from a medical point of view. So I will be coming back, uh, at your next meeting, more than likely with a whole new. Or could be a bunch of new information about how we're going to handle this, but yes, we're going to try to flood the areas best we can. Um, if we can get everything squared away. I actually made a video with Bob, uh, last Thursday morning. And then I found out from the state that the stuff I talked about is being discussed, so please don't say that. So I scrapped the whole video because that's what the state does, so. Anyways, to finish off what we're getting, we're getting paper mats for the writing surface, the folded one, like I said. We're getting ballot privacy carriers, uh, to make this all work. That's all coming from the state. It's not crossing the town anything. Uh, I just hope they have enough to supply the whole state in the Hampshire with all of this. Um, again, uh, all I want to say is absentee ballots, uh, please look online. Uh, Nico, uh, the chairman had just asked about the dates. I'm not quite sure, Nico, uh, Mr. Chairman, you could probably pick up an absentee ballot, um. Friday before the election, as long as you get it back to somebody. You can, uh, you can do it on Tuesday when you go back to the town office and hand it in and leave. Uh, because until five o'clock that day, we can take absentee ballots. So I, I believe it's up to the voter to figure out the timeline if they want to get. Uh, when they get the absentee ballot, how long are you going to take to mail it in? One day or two days, realizing you got Labor Day weekend, so Monday they're not mailing, uh, they're not, uh, doing mail. Sunday they're not doing mail. So you're going to have to take the time to figure out what's the best way to get that absentee ballot back in time so we can. Because once five o'clock comes and I get a ballot at five oh one, I write canceled on it because it's past the deadline. That's the law. I have to follow the law. And five oh one is over and done with when it comes to absentee ballots.
Mr. Moderator, one last question. Uh, how are we looking for volunteers and staff?
Well, um, the selectmen are going to be, uh, you, you're supposed to be at the, uh, voting anyway, but I'm going to. Really look at the selectmen heavily if the absentee ballots come in. Uh, to, at the size we think they're going to come in. If we start getting three, four thousand absentee ballots. The state changed the law, we can now start opening them at, uh, one hour after the polls opens. That means eight o'clock on the voting day. We're going to start taking care of the ballots. They're allowing us to start checking them in. Um, on Thursday, uh, the third or second, whatever it is of September. We, uh, the town clerk's office, when they're, when they can start going to a checklist. And marking out like we do with the yellow number saying Paul Scafidi sent his, uh, thing in, check it. So now that saves us a little more time at the voting booth. Because we still have to go through each one of those and go through the checklist, make sure they're doing it, so. Um, that's, that's the whole thing with that, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you.
Um, is there any other question?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could say, there is one, um, audience member who has their hand up, has had their hand up for a little. Uh, I am going to unmute them in just a moment if they could read their name or they could say their name and, um, address for the record. Thank you. Attending named Servie, I think. Should be able to unmute yourself.
Perhaps it's an accident. We should move on.
Okay.
Moderator, thank you and we will see you back, uh, August tenth.
Right, and if anything comes up before then, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's important. I will be getting back in touch with you and the town manager and the town clerk. Uh, to sit down and tell you what I've found is all going to shake out and how we're going to make it all happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, sir.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, we have public comment. Uh, we will open this up to the public for any comment. I would ask if your, if your comment is relative to anything that is on the agenda, that you please wait, uh, until we get to that spot on the agenda. Uh, but if not, and you wish to comment on something that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. We'd ask that you give your name and your address, um, when introducing yourself. I will pause for a moment, uh, to see if there's any public comment. Dan, I do not see any hands.
I am not seeing any.
Okay. Okay, seeing no hands, uh, pausing another second, I will close public comment. Um, and we do not have any proclamations and recognitions. Before we get to the approval of minutes, uh, I'd like to request the board, um, to make a consideration as we do not have a full board this evening. Selectwoman Gilman, our clerk, is not present this evening unfortunately. Uh, we only have four items that will be coming up for a vote this evening. Those four items, of course, are the approval of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty minutes. Uh, the third reading of the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment, which we still will read. Um, and the third item that was, that would require a vote is a parks and rec. Um, repair at one of the basketball tennis courts. We do not have any abatements, credits or exemptions, uh, but we do have one permanent approval. So there are four items for a vote. I would ask the board to consider, as we've done in the past, tabling. All items that are up for a vote to our August tenth meeting, at which time we would have a full board. I'll open that up for discussion and if there's none, if any of the board members would like to make a motion, I'd entertain that at this time.
Like to make a motion.
Okay.
Anyone, does anyone have any objection? Okay, great. Um, let's make a motion to postpone the four items mentioned, approval of minutes, third reading of animal control ordinance, permits. And approvals, and I think there was one other.
Parks and rec repair.
Parks and rec repair to our August tenth meeting when we have a full board to vote when Julie Gilman is back, Selectwoman Gilman is back. That's really wordy.
I'll second.
That's a complete motion, complete motion and a second. That's a complete motion, complete motion and a second. We do not have our clerk this evening, Select Woman Vice Chair Cowan. Would you volunteer to take the role this evening?
I sure will. Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Nay. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Chair Papakosindis.
Aye.
Um, I'll vote.
I didn't hear you.
Aye. Oh, okay.
Okay, so that was three ayes and one nay?
I was aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. So four ayes?
Aye.
Four, zero, and passage unanimously, thank you. So we will table our approval of minutes. And now we get to our discussion action items. I'd like to give a warm welcome and good evening to Superintendent David Ryan of SAU 16, who generously gave us his time tonight upon an invitation to discuss the draft return to school plan. Superintendent Ryan, thank you for your patience as we, as we get to you here. We're very excited to hear about your plan, so I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the invitation. It's always helpful to be able to talk through our planning. Just to do a mic check, can everybody hear me okay?
I can see you in here, you, yes.
Great, I'm usually at the office, still at this time, but my middle son had his wisdom teeth taken out this morning, so we've been home kind of nurturing him. And I'm in my older son's bedroom, who's away for the summer, so I apologize for the lighting. So our planning act is ongoing. As, as Paul mentioned, that every time he seems to have a plan to present to you, it changes. Either the guidelines change, there are pieces of data or research that come out that are very different. What I think I can do, however, is, I believe Bob has given me the ability to share my screen. I'd like to walk through the latest draft of our return to school plan. It's a little different than what I shared on July 20 with the joint board. We've made some edits to it based on information that we have either received from our public health agencies. We work with Stratford, as well as Seacoast Public Health Network, with Dr. Kristen Johnson. Now going to be working with each of the health officers as a team from each of our towns. So if you bear with me for just a moment, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and see if I can bring this up for you.
Perfect.
Excellent. So this we just put up on the website tonight. And the website, I should say, if I go to sau16.org, you'll see along the bottom, there are four tabs, SAU 16 District, Return to School, Our Schools in Contact. If you click the Return to School, you're going to have all of the information that we provided from that last week of February, all the way through, probably right up until the end of school. I forget when we made the switch over to the Return to School website. But the COVID-19 Resources page, for, for the parents and the audience around the board, you've received a lot of information from us. We've archived all of that information on the COVID-19 Resources page. We also now have added Return to School. And this is where you'll, where you'll find these two drafts, as well as our list of frequently asked questions. So in looking at our current plan, one that we just edited, I'll highlight in, in the spaces that we've made some of the changes, just so that everybody's up to date. But this is the plan we're going to share tomorrow night at 6:00 with the Cooperative School Board as well. We'll be televising that on Channel 13. We'll also, we have a large Zoom audience, we had over 500 audience members on July 20. For obvious reasons, this is a very compelling and interesting meeting to attend because it affects so much. And this will be made available to everybody. It's already available on the website, but we'll be showing this tomorrow night as well. Just very quickly, just to share that this wasn't a process that our staff or stakeholders took lightly. We continue to be consumed by it. The volume of communication, not only that we're sending, but certainly receiving, is at times a bit overwhelming. But we find ways to cull through every single family's concerns and identify specific themes and patterns. So that we ensure that we're answering questions and providing information that helps our families feel a little bit better about what we're anticipating five to six weeks from now. But as Paul said, some of those items, some of those answers are going to change. And I'll, I'll, I'll share those in a few minutes, but a lot of people have put time and effort into this plan. This page here just gives the names of 88, up to eight, I think it's about 88 people who worked on four separate committees, starting in the third week of April, near the end of April, right around April vacation, when we started to build the committees, all the way through June. There were teachers, technology folks, nurses, district and school level administrators, union representatives, parents, students, counselors, mental health counselors. Everybody had a food service, custodial, everybody had a role somehow in the operations of all of our schools and all of our towns. And they committed a lot of hours' time and effort in gathering information and research around one of four base models. These four models here are full return, interrupted, a hybrid, and a remote. We were on remote from March, March 16 through the remainder of the school year. Like every other school district, it seems, in the United States, was met with varying degrees of success, certainly levels of frustration, but also a lot of silver linings. There were some, some students who hadn't performed very well in the classroom, for whatever reason, actually did quite well on a remote platform. And conversely, students who always performed well in the classroom, were social, were active, really struggled with remote learning because of its seclusion, seclusionary nature. So that was a committee that spent a lot of time looking at, how can we prepare our teachers and our students? In the event that a, a, a second wave is, is the phrase that's being used, if that happens and we receive an executive order again to close schools, or as we did, feel that our schools needed to be closed to be a good community partner and close before there's an executive order. We want to ensure that there's a robust form of remote instruction, and how can we improve on the things that we learned from this past school year. Our hybrid committee was, was looking at, is there a way that we're able to conduct both in-person teaching and remote instruction? It's very difficult to do it well. However, as we continue day by day, moving towards a return to school, it may in fact be something that we're going to have to embrace. The sustainability of it from a teaching capacity is very difficult. That's an awful lot of pressure and work to put on a classroom teacher to, to teach in a synchronous way. Teaching live to some students in class while being video conference to the home, teaching students at home as well. There's another way to do a hybrid, where you're providing online work that's pre-recorded, as well as teaching students who are coming to school live. But given the number of students and families who are really demonstrating some concern about coming back to an in-class or an in-person situation, we're going to have to begin embracing remote instruction more than we had thought when we started planning this particular document about three or four weeks ago. Our interrupted return is exactly that. Anticipation of returning in-class, full bore, you know, naturally, health guidelines being followed, but also planning for moving to that remote piece. And then the full return is if there was nothing going on, if it was all a hoax and the joke's on us, and we get to go back to school without any masks or anything like that. We wanted to look at that full return because we certainly wanted to identify some of the, the concerns from families that, that they've raised relative to students who are returning to school, suffering some fairly traumatic events. This was a traumatic event for a lot of our students. There are several who are, many who are coming back full of anxiety. We have students who have been diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder from the abrupt transition. We know we have issues relative to food security. We certainly have issues around mental health and wellness, social, emotional learning for our students and our staff. And so that was a strong focus of the full return committee as well, on what would be that work we would need to do if everybody comes back to school. So the information that was gathered for these four base models really was used to construct the plan and the guidelines that we're implementing. We're calling them common expectations. When you have seven school districts, six towns with their elementary schools, and then the seventh school district being the cooperative with SST, the high school and the middle school, we have to respect and honor the different, different cultures, not only each of the towns, but the different levels of resources, the size of the school, the facility itself, the capacity for community members to participate in a cooperative way, whether that mean asking parents to drive students to school. And it wasn't necessarily something, we wanted a joint board, which is our 32 school board members, who operates as the SAU Joint Board. We didn't feel it was appropriate for them to decide on one plan that everybody was going to follow. Because that's not something that we were able to do, given 120 pupils school in East Kingston, as opposed to a 1,200 pupil middle school. So as we worked through that, we wanted to make sure that we paid our respect to the people that worked on that committee, or those committees. And then we had an ubercommittee, so a few people from each of those committees that helped us flush out even more of our thinking, which was also doubled with input from our school boards, a lot of input from our families, ongoing input from our families, direct emails to myself, our principals, our other district administrators, and then ultimately, this initial plan. One of the things that we think we're going to be able to do, and we're, we're, we're fairly confident in this, is we are going to have some form of in-school learning. I can't assume that it's going to just be everybody coming back to school, distancing out. We have to follow a framework of reduction of density and a restriction of mobility. So we've, we're looking at ways in our schools in order to make that happen. Lincoln Street, Main Street, EDP, administration is working very hard to, and working with teams within the school, that includes a school nurse, includes our teachers, anyone who wants to be part of the planning committee. In Exeter are working, and they have been working for weeks, on how to achieve that reduction of density and that restriction of mobility while providing as close to a normal, in-person academic experience for all of our students. And naturally, we have parents who are worried about that. And we continue to work with our parents and hear from them and gather their, their concerns. But I just wanted to make sure that we, we paid respect to everybody on this page, and I shared with you that it's our goal to be back in school. Our guiding principles, naturally, health and safety are first. I know, I know that Principal Ross has shared that health and safety are going to be paramount, as they are for us, our students, our staff, our families. We want to ensure that not only are our students safe in school, but our, our adults are safe as well, not only just working with students, but in the event that they're working near each other. And then when everybody goes home, students and staff, we want to ensure that they're not bringing any contaminant home, any type of virus or any illness. And so making sure that their families are safe. And then ultimately, making sure our community is safe as a result of operating school. It's so interdependent how this is all going to work. Because in the absence of a physical school day, it becomes extremely difficult for our area businesses, as well as our families, to maintain any type of economic activity. So, so this interdependence of everybody behaving in a responsible way to keep themselves healthy, wearing masks, physically distancing, observing all of the guidelines that we're supposed to be following, in order for us to have school, and then while school is operating, maintaining those healthy guidelines. It's so, so critical, and at any one turn, something could happen, and the whole plan just goes out the window. So it's, I'm very pleased that the, the selectmen are meeting online still. There are folks who believe that our school boards should be meeting in person, more so from the perspective of, well, if you're expecting the students and the staff to go to school, then you should be meeting in person as well. But I revert back to that interdependent piece, that in order for us to preserve an environment that's healthy and safe, and keep our transmission numbers as low as they are right now, then we need to mitigate all risks on all levels with all of our community members. So it's not that, that we're trying to put our students and staff at risk, it's that we're trying to maintain a healthy environment for them to go back to school. And we'll, we'll sacrifice the in-person meetings because it's working perfectly fine on an online format. Our in-person learning, I've shared some of that. Naturally, online learning is not a strong suit for some. But conversely, in-person learning isn't either. So still working through and understanding more about who's succeeding and which type of environment, and thinking more about how we're going to be able to offer that to ensure all of our families are getting exactly what they need. We do remind people, this is a health crisis, not an education crisis. We're trying to deliver high-level instruction to all of our families in the midst of a pandemic, but we're not trying to solve the pandemic. We're trying to find a way to provide instruction. And that hopefully helps bring it down a notch for folks who have a lot of fear about what's happening around them. Our seven principles of competency-based learning are our anchors. We tie ourselves, ourselves to two pillars in the SAU, the first being competency-based learning, where we believe demonstration and progress towards mastery of skills and knowledge are paramount to any other opportunity for students in school. We always want students progressing towards specific learning targets, benchmarking along the way. But as they achieve those targets, adding in levels of complexity for them to be able to be better thinkers, more creative innovators, better communicators. And so with these seven principles, we feel that from K all the way up to 12, that we can provide instruction that sticks to these seven points, regardless of the health and safety conditions that exist. So ramping everything up back to remote learning, we'll always have these be our anchors. Or if we're fully in-person or anything in between, these become our beacon. They'll always be there for us to follow, and they ground us. The other is the social, emotional learning piece. That's about the mental wellness. That is paramount to anything we do in the first few weeks of school. We're requiring empathy training for all of our staff. We went through it over the summer. We're arming teachers with trauma-skill and trauma-informed practices in order for us to be able to work with students on transitioning them back into school. We, as adults, are actually doing that with our staff members as well. We're going to be transitioning everybody back into their workplace, which is why we asked our joint board, and they did vote, to have our student start date on September 10. Originally, it was August 31. And so we need time with our teachers to help them understand that it's okay. And we're going to share in our experiences that we had from February to now. And we're going to have a safe place to do that in order for them to be ready to do the same thing with their students. I talked about the interdependence with the community impact. Weighing the risks, it's a really delicate topic, where families need to take stock in the level of risk they're willing to take for going to the grocery store, going to sit outside at a restaurant and be served, go to school, go to worship, go to, go to any meetings, or, or baseball games, or lacrosse games, or whatever we're doing now. Our public health safety networks all want us out of quarantine, trying to assemble, assemble back in small activities out in life to try to get things going again. And that's something that we believe we need to do for our students. But everybody has to understand their own level of risk. And we respect that and honor that. We try to meet them where they are when they express that to us. Paul said it best, I mean, this, this is a fluid document. This is the second of most likely seven or eight that are going to be posted between now and the beginning of school. And this is just our common expectations. Tomorrow night, we'll be sharing not only this, but we have some more detailed plans of how the high school is going to operate, how the middle school is going to operate, and how SST is going to operate. High school and the middle school, we are anticipating through our reduction of density model, operating double sessions, having half of our students arrive in the morning and stay for a morning block, and the other half of our students coming for an afternoon block. We'll be doing it by classroom, so we won't be having 20 to 24 students in a classroom. We'll be having anywhere from eight to 12 students in a classroom. And our classrooms at the high school, as well as at the middle school, can accommodate that with a six-feet standard or six-foot standard. can accommodate that with a six-feet standard or six-foot standard with students in masks. All of our adults will be wearing masks, all of our students over the age of two will be wearing masks. We're looking at how we can alternate in classrooms for more of our students and even some of our teachers and face shields, and what our public health officers have to say about face shields. Though that's still very much an ongoing conversation. As we know, facial coverings, the cloth masks are the ones that will work best. However, we still want to try and provide some opportunity for students and staff to see each other's faces, particularly for those who struggle with hearing or really need to see facial expressions to understand some of the words that are being used, particularly at the lower, lower levels and younger ages. Teacher's capacity is exactly what it is. How much can we ask our teachers to bear? They pivoted to remote pretty quickly last year, and they worked on their remote instruction plans throughout the entire semester while they were teaching. Incredibly difficult, particularly at the high school where you have five classes that you're teaching, or at the elementary level, where you're typically within your classroom and working four to four and a half hours each day with students directly. And then our middle school teachers who work in teams, who couldn't collaborate as well with all of their students like they normally do on their hundred-pupil teams. So we have to bear in mind what is the bend and break level of our teachers, and are we asking them in a fair and equitable way to do what is needed for all of our families, knowing that they'll do whatever they need to to make sure our kids are successful. But we also want to make sure that they come back and that they stay healthy, and that they're able to sustain this for a long period of time. And then the equity lens, we know, we know darn well that not all of our students have all of the resources, all of the households, all of the support that a lot of other students have. And we're very, very understanding of that. So making sure that we provide an opportunity for students to go during the school day, participate in learning, have that adult with the extra supervision, give them opportunities to kind of be in a safe place where right now, some of our students may not be in a very safe place. And I think we have a tremendous responsibility as a school district to provide that for our kids, particularly any of our students who are coming to school, whether it be in the elementary, middle, or the high school. That's something that frightens me is that we are looking at or we're hearing from parents who are pushing for remote instruction because they have the capability of being home and educating and working with their children. But I know a lot of our other families don't, because they're working during the day or they're working two or three jobs. They just can't make that happen. They can't drive their children to school. They can't help their children at home. You know, I shouted to think what happens with a nine- or ten-year-old student who's at home all day by him or herself, trying to go through remote instruction. So we have to be mindful of that. And that's, that's one of our core values in the SAU, is providing the greatest amount of advocacy for the kids who have the least amount of it. That's a responsibility of ours that we, we stick to. So when we look at conditions of return, we've classified for. I also, again, want to, I always do this publicly, thank Steve Zadravich, Portsmouth School Department. He's superintendent there. His wife teaches for us at the middle school. The outline and the organization of this plan came from Portsmouth. We filled in a lot of information. We changed some of it, but that's one thing we're very fortunate to have in the Seacoast region, is that superintendents lately, more so than ever, have been sharing a lot of our information. And just, just, you know, copying and, and using each other's ideas, because we're a heck of a lot smarter when we're all together, and it's paying off for, for everybody. We're, we're going to be entering under a condition three, which is right here. It's in-person with safety requirements. We know pretty well the numbers that we have in the Exeter region. Working with Dr. Johnson, I have the pleasure of talking every other Thursday now with Mark Whitney and other folks, Deb Vasapoli from Exeter Health Resources, folks from Core Physicians, a few of our assisted living facilities, Niktumpus, who was former commissioner of the Department of Health and Human Services for the state of New Hampshire. We've been meeting weekly since March, and every week we share information, we share data, the hospital shares our data. Transmission rates are so, I don't want to say so low, transmission rates are very low. We're very low in this part of the state. We're very lucky, but we also still under pretty strict guidelines. A lot of our folks are still working remotely. So we understand that some numbers may arise, but we believe that infections are low enough for us to be green-lighted so that we can have our students return to school. We use the American Academy of Pediatrics for social distancing for our elementary school students, which is three to six feet. Facial coverings required for all, face shields continue to be researched. We're, we're encouraging outdoor mask breaks, more outdoor classroom use, where, you know, students who are out at recess, it's going to be very difficult for us to tell a third or fourth grader who's out at recess that they can't run around and play with their friends, most likely because they haven't seen them for a really long time, and take their masks off. We're going to still work through that, and that's going to be more of a case-by-case basis. Teachers are going to be very helpful in that, but that's going to be a very difficult thing for everybody to do. We're just not going to sugarcoat it and say it's going to be really hard. But that's not going to stop us from trying to do it and do it in a very safe way. Screening, we're going to ask our families, and the CDC just sent this information on July twenty-third as an upgrade or an update to what they originally sent out. They've always been supportive of families doing their own screening at home. Dr. Johnson, who's a pediatrician with Core Physicians, advised us to have our students be screened at home. Parents can take their temperature. Certainly, we have our screening questionnaire that we used for our high school graduation, and we just adapted that under guidance from our health partners to have all of our families follow through, and if there was ever a yes on one of those questionnaires, or the student doesn't feel, feel well, they're going to stay at home. We're also looking at apps. There are two apps that I know of right now that you can use to not only screen and respond, but also submit and alert the school that it was completed. And so if there is a a number of students who hadn't submitted their questionnaires, our school nurses can help respond to that. More detail coming out about that, and certainly that that there's a lot more to look into, but I know that that's being looked at by our school nurses as well. So we'll be looking at daily class schedules as close to possible. Our elementary school students will remain in their classrooms, again, with outdoor breaks, recess, used to the restroom naturally, but probably one-way hallways. They'll be, they'll be having lunch within their classrooms. Breakfast is probably going to be a grab-and-go, but lunch will be brought to them in their classrooms. At the high school and middle school level, we're going to continue with our food distribution. We have locations throughout the SAU that we've been using to take care of any food security issues. We know that families who typically would not use free or reduced lunch really ran into some trouble when there was either a layoff or a furlough and things changed, economic conditions changed. State worked with all of the school districts to ensure that a waiver was approved through the summer. So all of our families, as long as we're distributing on the roadside at, you know, Meeting House Place or Lyndonshire, that we are still able to provide free meals for all of our, all of our students and families. That's going to continue for middle and high, so we're not going to be serving lunch in the schools at Cooperative Middle School or Exeter High School, which eliminates the need to bring mass gatherings together and utilizing that large space. We can utilize that large space in both schools now for a couple of different reasons. But over at CMS, where the renovation project is continuing, they're able now to get into that cafeteria much more quickly, which is very helpful, because the interruption to the school day will be more limited based on the construction. And so that's essentially where we are in those common expectations for what the in-school looks like from a general standpoint. There is a a bit of an asterisk on remote. We asked our families and we asked our staff to submit a letter to, we asked our staff to submit a request to us and our families to submit a request to their respective school principals for remote instruction based on either an ADA, Section 504, some other health issue related to COVID-19. We also encouraged families whose siblings or parents or grandparents or whomever is living in the household could be adversely affected because they had a health issue related to COVID-19. So we're trying to cast that net. We did send a survey out to try and get a general sense of where we are. So as you can see, almost sixty percent of our families have responded. I can tell you that of that sixty percent, eighty-five percent of that number of almost three thousand families have said our children are coming to school. We've also asked families to indicate whether or not they're going to rely on us to provide masks. Ninety-two percent have said they'll be sending their children in with masks. We know that this doesn't represent all of our families, so we're asking families to continue responding to the survey. If they haven't done so, it's open until Friday. And again, it's non-binding. It also gives us the opportunity to find out where folks live who still require bus transportation, because that was a question or two that we asked, which will give us, again, a general idea of how we can repurpose school buses. Should, should parents be able to bring their children to school, which is something that we have asked. It also gives us the geographic location as well as the school, so that we know that in Kensington, if we only need one of their two buses, we can bring that bus over into Exeter so that we can ensure that our students going to Main Street and Lincoln Street will be able to sit one child per seat. Usually, there are seventy-seven children on an elementary school bus. We'll be looking at twenty-six, because they're permitted to sit in one, one pupil per seat on alternating sides. You have that high-backed seat, so you have the separation between the students in the front and students right behind. So one in each seat, all the way back. We would need three buses for everyone at the elementary level. And so utilizing the resources we already have, because we can't buy any more buses. First student can't buy any more buses, and they wouldn't be able to train any additional drivers. So this is where that community piece comes in, where we're all going to have to work together to make this happen. The other piece about the remote option is if you just didn't feel comfortable sending your child back, there was nothing health-related, everybody's healthy, but you're not ready because you're fearful, that you would, you could request that, but you would have to enroll in Virtual Learning Academy Charter School or some other online platform separate from SAU sixteen. What we want to be able to do is help bridge families with those resources. But the more I am hearing from families and the more I'm reviewing their communication, I think we need to do something a little bit different. I think we need to be much more responsible for providing that remote instruction. I don't know how yet, and so we have to continue to work through that. But it's very difficult for an organization of our size with about a hundred and twelve million-dollar budget to cater and tailor to all of our families in ways that they need best, even though that's our mission, especially when we're talking about having enough personnel in school and enough personnel for remote instruction. And that becomes the rub. So my greatest concern in moving towards offering some type of remote option, even for families who are just simply choosing not to send their children, is a labor issue. And I think a labor issue is going to be the one that sets us back in our planning and one we're going to have to work through. Because I would hate to have to move to a full remote. So that we continue to wrestle with. In terms of providing PPE, as I indicated, we asked our families to provide masks. Ninety-one to ninety-two percent are certainly in favor of that. We've also ordered over a hundred thousand masks, based on our calculations. We just made our, just put that order in for disposable masks. We'll provide those for students that they don't have a mask of their own, certainly hand sanitizer. And then other, other health and safety issues. We have, we just put eight more Clorox sanitizing machines on order. We have two fifty-five gallon drums of Clorox disinfectant coming for the use of those machines. We're going to be improving or increasing the frequency of sanitizing and cleanliness. Inside classrooms, there'll be expectations that we spray and wipe desks. How the teacher works with that, we're going to work with the principals of the schools on how they want to facilitate that. But certainly surfaces, doorknobs, bathrooms. That's going to be done with our maintenance staff, our facility staff, and for food service workers who are not conducting any type of school meals, we're going to ask them to help participate in sanitizing and cleanliness of the school. So we'll repurpose them, but they just won't be serving meals such as Cooperative Middle School and the High School. And then the new student start date, Thursday, September tenth, so we've talked about why we felt that was important. This is the ongoing planning. I try to fit, I can right there, fit it all in one screen. These are the very specific school, school-centric tasks that need to be done. I know tomorrow afternoon, I'm in a meeting with East Kingston Elementary School about their planning. New Fields Elementary, Kensington and East Kingston are well on their way. They've worked collaboratively on how they can utilize space in their schools. Brentwood, I know, is doing very well. We'll be working with them. As I said, Main Street, Lincoln Street, and the Developmental Free School are working on how they're going to be able to, to accomplish this whole. Esther Asbell, our associate superintendent, works very closely with all of our Exeter elementary schools, and so she's been right there with, with the group. Facilities, we've talked about health and nursing protocols. Our nurses led by Meg Laverty have really risen to the occasion. Not only did they participate in an initial call with Dr. Chan, but they're going to be staying on weekly with Dr. Chan, and they've already constructed a letter to send home to families about what our isolation protocol is, that if a student is so fresh, I don't remember the details, and I hesitated telling you, I'd rather wait for the letter to come out and go home to families. I just reviewed it yesterday. But what we're going to do in the event that a student is sick at school, if a student comes to school sick, students to go home, what are all the steps that we're going to take? As far as what threshold we're going to use for if we close a classroom or wing or a school with a percentage, we've been advised to wait as the CDC continues to change its guidelines on what that looks like. Originally, it was fourteen days and two negative tests within seventy-two hours. Now it's a ten-day quarantine with no tests or one test. It's still changes, it seems, and so we're going to wait until we get more more guidance from CDC as well as our health partners, and we get closer to the start of school. But we'll have certainly a closing procedure and if then flow chart that we'll follow when we have more solid information and guidance. Transportation, we talked about food service. School schedules, those are being worked out right now. I can't thank our SAU staff enough. The teachers, our paraprofessional secretaries, principals, all working really hard for their specific school and what's going to work best for them. And then naturally, communication. We've tried our very best to communicate as much as we can, as clearly as we could, with no, with, with no entertainment value. I know that they can come across fairly dry, but we think that parents just need the information clear as, clear as a bell to know what's happening with their children. And so we're going to continue to do that. We were very fortunate to secure the services of Cookson Communications out of Manchester for this upcoming year, who's going to be helping us with our communication strategy, ensuring that we're, we're hitting all the senses when it comes to communication. Are we, are we communicating enough? Are we hitting all of our audiences? For instance, I don't have the access to our families who live in the SAU, who don't have children in our schools anymore. And so we have so many voters. I think Mike Morgan always talked about eighty percent of our voters don't have children in our schools. How are we connecting with them? They're paying taxes to support our school district. We need to be communicating with them about what we're doing. And I don't have that capability. Cookson's going to help us, we believe, work to make sure that all of our audiences are getting the important information that they need. So can't thank our health and community partners enough. Dr. Johnson's been a rock star, certainly Mark Whitney, Deb Vasapoli, James Murray, I know, has consulted with us, who's really helpful for graduation as well. The area public health networks, one in Stafford County, the other one at Seacoast Public Health Network. Scott Schuler from Stafford County just sent a nice reinforcement email about some of the bulleted items we need to be paying attention to, that we make sure that we have included in our plan. And so Dr. Bobby Kelly, who's at next door in New Fields, recommended that we add each public health officer from each of our towns to the conversation as we get closer, so that we're getting more direct information from them. And so I've asked Dr. Johnson to kind of spearhead organizing that, so we have a fairly calm organization of it, so that we don't have six public health officers all coming with different information, so. That's what I can report out to date Monday, July twenty-seventh. We look forward to talking in more detail about the Cooperative School Board schedule and details tomorrow night at six o'clock. With that, Mr. Chair, I would turn that back to you.
Thank you for that very thorough report. And I know that several of the board members will probably have questions, but Superintendent Ryan, as a parent, first and foremost, the communication always, but particularly since the pandemic, the communication from not only your office but all the schools is always very clear, and it's appreciated. And it's appreciated that you get to the point of what we need to know. But in addition to being very clear, it's also very timely. And that's appreciated. I extend the same invitation to you that I gave Principal Ross and a few weeks ago. I opened, I'd love to continue the dialogue back and forth between us, and you do have, you know, a lot of people who vote, who pay taxes, that don't have children in the schools anymore. You're always welcome on our agenda. And anything that we can do to help is a resource. So we're always open to talking with you. So I see Select Woman Cowan has a question. I'll turn it over to her.
Thanks, Select Woman Papaglis and Beast. And thank you very much, Dr. Ryan, for being here and for all of the work that you've done. I know that nobody expected to be in this position. And so, you know, it's been, it's been really helpful. I do have two boys in the elementary school here, one who was a happy remote learner and one who was a very miserable remote learner. And, you know, both of them are anxious to get back to school, and they're also anxious about how safe it is. So I just want to, you know, thank you for your deliberate approach to this. Thank you for all of the specifics that you've offered. Thank you for listening and, you know, I know that this is a fluid situation. So I suppose, you know, and you probably won't be able to answer this question, but I feel like I just need to ask it anyway. What specifically would result in the SAU closing again and moving to full remote learning? Would it be an outbreak here in town, in our county, a certain number of cases? I'm hoping you can speak sort of directly to where you would be in terms of closing. And then my second question, which is a self-motivated question, but I know a lot of families have it, and I heard you, I heard you say that if families are not comfortable sending their children to school, they may need to enroll their kids in V-Lax, Virtual Learning Academy Charter School. Would families need to disenroll from the SAU, or would they still be students in the SAU for the next year or for the next term? Or like, how does that work?
Two really great questions. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for your comments. I appreciate that very much. Can I take the last question first? So V-Lax is an interesting animal. They just added their K to three curriculum. It's not a full-day curriculum. And V-Lax is just one example of what families can do. You wouldn't disenroll. Your student would remain enrolled in the Exeter schools. They would just participate in courses. That's one of the luxuries we have in New Hampshire, is it's a publicly funded charter school. That the only time that you want to disenroll your child from your homeschool district is if you're going to fully enroll your child into V-Lax. For instance, their high school diploma program or their middle school program. So because the elementary curriculum is still very new, and they've just expanded it in response to the pandemic, we would advise anyone and everyone to not disenroll. But that's the piece that I'm really struggling with is for us to just simply not be able to provide a form of remote instruction for our students who, like your family, might be considering holding your students back because of a level of risk that we talked about. I'm not comfortable with that. I feel as though we really need to provide something for our families instead of just simply saying, eh, just go to V-Lax. That's not, that's not sitting well with me. So I can't a hundred percent fully answer your question, but I I can say that I'm really troubled by the possible result of if a family doesn't want to send their elementary school student because of fear, then what does that do for the elementary school student? Not, really not comfortable there right now. So I have to keep working at that, and our team needs to come up with a better response to that.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I then worry about the enrollment numbers for next year. So that's really good to hear you say that.
Yeah, and we pressed the commissioner on some news that he shared last week relative, because that question was coming up, right? So our average daily membership translates to adequacy dollars, and that's what our adequacy grant is each year. And so we don't naturally want to lose students off of ADM by October one, because then we factor in a loss for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year. And that's that's not something that we want to do simply because we couldn't provide instruction for our kids.
And it'll be devastating to catch it up, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So so that's a piece. The other piece is when would we close? What we did in the spring was, we I mean, I started reading about it. I started reading about coronavirus probably early to mid-January, like a lot of other people started to, who wanted to kind of get a handle on what is, what is this? It seems like it's, you know, kind of important. And as the news cycle changed and almost daily bulletins were being posted, Dr. Johnson and I spent a lot of time trading information right up until March twelfth. And March twelfth, I don't know if you remember, but that night I sent out a letter to families letting them know that I'm sorry, but there will be no visitors allowed in school tomorrow, there'll be no large gatherings anymore. And then literally overnight, I got texts about four in the morning from Kristen, who said, here's some information. And I read it, and I got on the phone. We talked with Dr. Meehan over at the hospital, as well as some of the other team members, and I just point-blank asked them, is this something I need to consider closing for? And they said, if you could do that, that would help us out so much in our planning and what we need to do. So that was a no-brainer for us. I think we'd be in the same place. I think we'd use the same format and the same procedure. Is if we have cases, because everybody's involved with what we're doing, no matter who you talk to, everybody's involved with it. If we had a case or two or three, I would naturally not be doing this in a vacuum. I'd be working with public health, and I'd be working with our hospital friends, and we're working through it, taking guidance from them. So I don't know what the number is, but we would certainly work together to go to a level of, you know, by then, we hopefully will have more guidance. I'm not crossing my fingers on this, but that's the best I can say today.
Okay.
Select Woman Round Trio has a question or comment?
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, so much for your update, and it was very helpful listening. Was it last week or two weeks ago? Time is all sorts of messy in my head. But I know you guys had like a good four-hour meeting updating everyone about the Joint Board. I just want to put out there, since we have attendees watching, and also this is on Facebook and Channel twenty-two, when is the next update that people can look out for so that they can tune into that to get a more detailed update of what's going on with the school district and what they should be planning for next?
Sure. So tomorrow night at six o'clock on Channel thirteen, as well as Zoom, the letter I sent out, or the email I sent out Saturday morning contains the links to the posting that has the Zoom information. So tomorrow night at six o'clock is the Cooperative School District. I'll be presenting, similar to how I just presented to you, some of the changes in the draft plan, and then our principals will be talking in more detail about what it's going to look like during the school day at their respective schools.
Thank you so much. That was really helpful hearing it here and also knowing that we can tune in tomorrow as well. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Superintendent Ryan? Well, you know, Superintendent Ryan, this isn't the way it was supposed to be for any of us, but particularly for our kids and for our educators, and coming from a person whose parents were both public educators, I know it wasn't supposed to be like this. Your staff, starting with you all the way down, have just done a tremendous job with no notice from March all the way through the end of the year, and all of the work that you've put in the summer to ensure a safe return for our kids. Thank you for all of that. We appreciate your staff, all of the teacher-supporting staff, but particularly thank you for continuing the school meal program for our kids, and thank you for giving our graduates a graduation ceremony.
Thank you. I appreciate all the kind words, Mr. Chair. Thanks very much for having me.
Any other questions?
Terrific.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Ryan also for coming in tonight and sharing all the information with us. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Russ.
And we'd love to have you back.
I look forward to coming back.
Terrific. Thank you. Good luck tomorrow night.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. That was great. Mr. Dean, thank you for facilitating that. Okay, next on the agenda, we have another presentation, taking a slightly different pivot here. We have a presentation from Jennifer Perry, Matt Barubi, and Chris Berg from Wright Pierce, who are going to discuss or present the wastewater facility and main pump station asset management. So, Mr. Barubi, if you and your team are ready?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can answer you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. With me this evening, I have Chris Berg, who is a Senior Project Manager at Wright Pierce. I have Sharon Knoll, who is a supervisor in the New Hampshire DES Wastewater Bureau. She's a Planning Protection Assistance Section. And Jen Perry is our Public Works Director. Tonight, we'll be presenting asset management for the wastewater treatment plant and a little bit of the main pump station, but more on the wastewater treatment facility that we currently have just built. The funding mechanisms with the clean water SRF and the SRF for the water. As a component of that, you're now adding asset management and looking at your new investment as a whole and looking down long-term and in the future. So with that, I'll hand it over to Chris. He's going to start with the presentation, and then I'll be finishing up with the last few slides.
Great, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me, and everybody hear me and see me share my screen.
Yes.
All right, excellent. So we'll be talking about the wastewater treatment facility, in particular, and asset management associated with that facility. So a quick overview of what we're going to talk about tonight. Give you a quick update on what assets are, what asset management is as a practice. Go through the existing infrastructure that's currently in place related to the wastewater treatment facility. Talk about level of service as a component of asset management. Go through some of the asset inventory work we did, condition assessment work we did, run through some risk analysis associated with those assets that we've inventoried. What asset renewal over the course of the next twenty, thirty years is going to look like from a costing perspective, and then run through next steps, both in the immediate term and sort of more broadly across the utility for our asset management. So just running through kind of a recent history of utility asset management in town at Exeter. Now, this is, asset management's not a new concept to the town. You know, recently, starting back in two thousand and two, the Public Works Department has been working towards, sorry, has been working towards developing digital information related to other water, wastewater, stormwater assets, getting that information into databases so that that information can be used to both assess their assets and make decisions associated with both the condition, when they need to be replaced, how they can be replaced in tandem with other projects, and basically how to make the best, most, you know, value-conscious decisions on replacing and repairing, you know, assets throughout town. In two thousand and eight, we implemented People GIS. We'll talk more about People GIS as a computerized maintenance management system as basically that central repository, that central data set that this information that we're using for asset management will kind of reside in. Two thousand and nineteen, as part of this program, sort of stepped up to the next level of asset management related to People GIS. Both across the drinking water side, sewer collections, stormwater asset management. There's been some recent projects that the department has been doing to make sure that they're continuing to improve their asset management program. And two current ongoing projects, both in the collection side and the stormwater and the water system on the vertical components, that would be the facility assets as well. So a lot of asset management activity going on in town, which is really a very, very good sign that we're moving towards a sustainable utility practices here. In general, related to this project, you know, what are the assets we're looking at? It's associated with the wastewater facility. So what are those? The buildings, the pipes, the pumps, the tanks, the outfalls, the electrical components, instrumentation, mechanical equipment, all these assets. There's a lot of assets that go into this into the wastewater treatment facility in Exeter. And so in managing those things, you know, what is the definition we're looking at here? So this is a systematic process of operating, maintaining, upgrading, and ultimately disposing, replacing, repairing those assets cost-effectively, you know, while maintaining this level of service that's acceptable to customers. So we'll talk more about level of service. That's an important topic in asset management in a couple of minutes. So now moving through this, asset manager really is a cyclical process. You know, it's something that can use to continuously be done, looking at our existing infrastructure, assessing what it looks like, reviewing level of service. Is the level of service appropriate? Is it, are we supplying too good a service for the cost that's being for the cost of the consumer or the is paying versus what the level of service are getting? Is it too good, too bad? And does that need to get adjusted? Running through the risk analysis associated with, you know, what that is of the assets themselves. How do we prioritize that risk? How does that roll into capital improvements? And then we got to do it all again, because that, the level of risk, the level of service, and the capital outlay will continue to change as we continue to, as assets continue to age. So for the existing wastewater facility, what does it look like? Now, the town did a very extensive upgrade to their treatment facility, and ninety-nine percent of the assets in that facility are now new as of two thousand and nineteen, which from a risk perspective is great. The likelihood of failure of all those treatment facilities is very low. And developing an asset management plan and program associated with new assets is really actually a really nice way to start off with this, because you can build your record of maintenance and everything from the start. So you have a really good handle on what the actual condition is as opposed to kind of building this thing halfway through or three quarters of the way through. We have less data to work off of. So now that, you know, you've built this plant, everything's ready to go. We can just leave it alone for the next twenty years. That's definitely not the case. And now, you know, the work of maintaining and managing those assets and really you know, driving the value proposition here is this is where the hard work starts, tracking the data, doing the appropriate preventative maintenance, you know, getting things right so that we can extend the the asset life through here and make sure that this does the best job and provides the best value to the customers in Exeter. The level of service is really how we judge, excuse me, or how we can define how the assets perform, how we want the system to perform, and over the long term. This is more of a holistic approach. We didn't look just necessarily at the wastewater facilities. We looked at both the facilities and the collection system. So some of the stuff that you'll see here on the next slide, you'll see again. When we come to the conclusion of the collection system asset management plan as well. So this is just a sample of some of the level of service objectives on the wastewater side of things. We've got objectives. How do we measure them? What are the goals? And then as we get more data and as this facility continues to function, we'll have more data on how we're actually performing against the goals. So in the sort of the three categories that I've got shown here, the customer satisfaction, one of the things that we're looking at is to minimize repeat emergency callbacks. Measure that. It's obviously repeat callbacks per year. Measure that. It's obviously repeat callbacks per year. How are we going to? And we've got a goal of zero there. Now, this is really to customer satisfaction. Some of these level of service goals are actually dictated by regulations. So another example of that one is the effluent nitrogen concentration. So the water that the wastewater treatment facility processes, its discharge needs to have less than five milligrams per liter nitrogen to meet those permit levels. So those are the types of things that we're looking at from a regulatory standpoint. And then on the backend is this effective resource management. Are we managing the resources most effectively? Or we extracting best value out of it? So one of the goals there in inspecting the grease traps. So going out in the distribution system and making sure those inspections are conducted at 100% across the board for per year. That's 70 grease traps that we're looking at inspecting. So, you know, we can make sure that the, as the wastewater that's coming at this facility is treated, there's some pretreatment that's associated with it out in the system. So it's not seeing loading that we're not expecting or it's not desired. So those inspections, there's a lot of things like that associated with condition assessment, pipes, manholes, and a number of other things related to that. So if you're looking for a sort of that, the expanded version of this, that could be provided as well. But it's just a sample of what those level of service topics are associated with this plan. Well, digging into the asset inventory, the actual, some of the work that we're looking at. We tracked over, the DPW folks will be tracking over 400 assets at this wastewater treatment facility. There's approximately 100 process assets that can be broken down into component parts, but we're tracking it at a process level. Approximately 200 instrumentation, electrical assets, and 150 mechanical assets related to. So over 400 assets we're looking at here. And each of these things, we've got IDs where they're located, you know, make, model associated with that and from that inventory component. And Matt will talk a little bit more about this, but all this information gets put into this, the People GIS system. There's operation maintenance manuals that can be applied to, pictures of condition, and a whole lot more information on the backside of it gets built into this People GIS as well. Looking at, taking the next step further, we need to, in looking at costs associated with asset replacement, data that we build out based on our design estimates and what estimated effective life. So we've got general estimated effective life as this, as we build, we continue to build the data that we develop based on the condition assessments that will happen on an ongoing basis. And the PMs, this estimated effective life number will get refined as we collect more data over time. The condition assessment stuff, like I talked about, it's, everything was installed in 2019. So the condition rating, performance, and the reliability generally across the board for all the assets, very high, which is a nice thing to have. But the scoring generally, the way we have it right now is, is everything scores very low from a risk perspective because all the assets are new. And you design redundancy into the facility, you know, all good things. And then we also build in kind of a calculated replacement date for when these assets are planned to be retired. So from a risk scoring standpoint, there's, we develop a probability of failure score. And that's based on a one to five criteria. Looking at the effective life consumed, that's mostly based on time, but there's also a condition component also, and then the consequence of failures side of things, which is looking at if this specific component that we're looking at directly fails, how does the whole process fall apart? If there's some minor components, it gets a low score. If it's a total failure of the treatment facility, you know, then it gets a very high score. We also included a redundancy, a risk mitigation factor in there. So if there are multiple treatment trains and we can operate with one offline, there's some risk that gets mitigated by having that value in there as well. So multiply our probability of failure times our consequence of failure times our risk mitigation factor, and that gets us to this business risk exposure rating. And that generally is a way we can kind of look at risk. Across the board, right now, there's not a lot of risk with any specific asset, which is a very nice thing. But as the facility continues to age and, excuse me, and the probability of failure increases, we'll see more and more risk associated with these assets. And from a renewal perspective here, we also including this cost of renewal when the renewal, when the asset is planned to be renewed or placed or retired, and what the future cost is based on inflation, 2% inflation, annual inflation number there. So what does all that mean? In a nutshell, there's, at the end of the day, there's approximately, just to keep this facility rolling along over the next 30 years, there's approximately $9 million worth of asset renewal replacements. So component parts of this facility, the ultralight disinfection process, specific pumps, motors, the centrifuges, the electrical components, instrumentation components. Those are, right now are calculated to be in the, have a 20-year lifecycle roughly. So there's a pretty sizable chunk of assets that are going to need to get replaced in this 2038, 39 there. And then there's another, about five years down the line, another chunk of assets we're looking at replacements. So there's, in total, there's over $14 million worth of renewals over the next 30 years, just to keep this wonderful, amazing, expensive facility operational and doing the really, really good work that it does to get down to the effluent limits that it's capable of. So in, I guess flipping the numbers around a little bit and looking at from a, if you were, if you had to pay for all of these things yourself without any grants or loans or other funding partners, you're looking at potentially a little less than $700,000 per year to replace those assets over the long term. That being said, there are opportunities that Exeter is taking advantage of and is capable of taking advantage of that could reduce the cost to the customer associated with these renewals over the course of the next 20 years. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Matt, who's going to talk more about continued assessment, maintenance, and of the system. Matt, you're still on mute.
Thank you. I'll tell you when you just move to the next slide, just so we keep your presentation up. So as Chris had said, we have been doing asset management for many years now. Currently, what you see on the screen is kind of, kind of the newer systems that are coming up. With, from 2002 to now, obviously, technology has gotten better. Our GPS system has been upgraded. I'll have a slide on the next one. This new treatment plan has kind of pushed us into the new work order asset management phase where we're no longer just looking at, hey, we installed it, run to failure. We're kind of in the mode of, we make big investments like this. We want to prolong them. We want to take care of them as if they were like our own investment at our house. You know, we buy a new furnace. We're going to clean it every year to make sure it runs well. Same goes with all these pipes and process equipment. So next slide, Chris. This is just a quick example of the new GPS system we have in town. We are able to do GPS through our tablet, get real-time data correction, and update all our pipes, manholes, gate valves, hydrants, all that. We're able to do that in real-time fashion. In the process of teaching multiple users so that we're out there doing real-time work orders. We see a problem, we can make a work order. As long as we have the internet connection, we can make a work order on the fly and send it back to the foreman and start, you know, processing that. Next slide. So specifically for this wastewater plant, again, this was a, as all SRF or Clean Water SRF funding projects, they all have a piece to them now, and it's asset management. We just went through this with the TTHM project upgrade. There was a piece to that. So just like that, this wastewater treatment plant had a little bit more teeth behind it. I was able to work with People GIS, and I actually was able to get them to custom build a facility suite software that will be able to be implemented and used to do all our preventive maintenance and work orders and track all those spreadsheets that Chris had on previous slides have all been built onto a computer so that when we're out there doing an inspection or repair to a pump, we're actually grading that pump on a one to five scale, and all those numbers are getting adjusted. So if we're able to maintain equipment, maybe you're able to get a longer span of life, maybe five more years out of something. That's not always to say that, you know, the best preventive maintenance, you might lose a piece of equipment. Some of the environments that these pieces of equipment are in are tough. But we've definitely taken on a new perspective as far as it being an asset. We're going to continue to identify and promote this. I've taught, I'm going to be implementing the facilities in the next few weeks so that we'll be starting to create all our preventive maintenance. We've been doing it on paper right now, but now that the software is coming available, we'll be able to computerize it for ourselves. Next slide. So as, as we move forward with software, this can also be used to, for all of our assets. That's including the collection system, the distribution system, our stormwater system. Once, now that the framework has been built, we'll be able to utilize these for all of our assets and bring on the other utilities moving forward and teach the other departments how to use this. Potentially, we'd like to be able to, as we move forward with other projects, we'll continue to upgrade and work with DES with more projects for asset management funding. Next slide. And we want to thank you for having us this evening. And we thank you for your time. We take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Matt. You can take the presentation down. I can see the panelists again.
So I think before, maybe before we do questions, I'd like to pitch it over to Sharon.
Oh, okay.
Just to, just to say a couple of words from the state's perspective.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to present this, this, what your staff has been doing. Asset management is a valuable tool to help select boards, commissioners, make data-driven decisions. If you don't understand what you own and what you're responsible for, and all the data and the work and the condition that it's in, it's impossible to make proper, cost-effective decisions. I would encourage all of the selectmen, have any of you guys seen the new treatment plant? Have you been out there?
Yes.
I would encourage you to get, go out there, get a basic understanding. Matt would be happy to give you a tour, right, Matt? Between the plant and all the pump stations, it is, it's one of the most, well, it's one of the best public health advancements ever. And so understanding that valuable utility that you own and that you're responsible for is critical. The asset management program can help you do that. I also want to say that I believe you guys are going to be coming in next year for another round of asset management loan forgiveness to add all the pump stations into the existing program. So we've got, we've given $90,000 so far. I know that's a drop in the bucket relative to the new treatment plant you just built, but it does help. We've got another $30,000 for the wastewater pump stations. Once you've got the plant up and running and you want to optimize it from an energy efficiency perspective, we can come in. We have an energy auditor that specializes in water and wastewater operations or treatment plants. No paperwork, no, no cost to the town. We can come in and do that audit and help you optimize that operation. So that's what, I just want to commend your staff. They're doing a great job. And keep supporting them, please.
Thank you, Sharon. We appreciate that. Jennifer, I didn't know if you wanted to weigh in at all?
I just want to thank everybody tonight for your time. I know it's been a long night. Matt has been a champion for asset management, and he has really led this effort and has worked hard to kind of meld the People GIS system with what work Wright Pierce has done. And thank you, Matt, for your presentation. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. This is a very important aspect of what we do, and it's the responsible thing for us to do, to manage our assets in this way. And that's, this is kind of the philosophy the department has had with all of our assets, whether it's road surface systems, wastewater treatment plants, facilities. This is, this is what we have to do. So thank you. I know it's a little bit dry, but, and as Sharon suggested, we're here and welcome anybody that would like a tour to get a better sense of everything, and you might want to pace that tour. We wouldn't throw everything at you in one day, but we're very proud of what we're doing, and we'd like to share that with others. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, did you want to add anything?
No, I, all I would add is I just want to thank Jennifer and her staff. They do a great job with this, and I think our asset management program is coming into focus more and more with the different elements of it and the pieces. And as we build that up, it's really going to benefit us over the long term. So they've done a great job adjusting and sort of building that. And I will continue to encourage them to keep up the good work.
Great, thank you. And you know, Matt, not completely relative to this presentation, but it got me thinking what we've discussed during the last two Sustainability Advisory Committee meetings. It might be an opportunity for you and Dave and I to sit down, and maybe you could put a small presentation together for a future meeting of them so that they can understand exactly what you and your crew are doing.
Sure.
Great.
Yeah, let me know.
I will, I will. Any questions or comments from the board? Great, okay. Thank you all. Great presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
All right. So from there, we will pivot to the third and final reading of the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment. Although we will, we have already voted to table voting until the next meeting. Nonetheless, we do need to read it for the third and final time. Vice Chair Cowan, would you be willing to step up and pitch it for Selectwoman Gilman?
Yep. All right. So I'll, so here's the reading. It's amend Chapter 9 of the Exeter Town Ordinances, delete section 910, parenz, section C, 910. Prohibit, prohibit, prohibition, prohibition in parks and commons. No person, firm, or corporation shall allow to have in their physical control any dog while in the geographical confines of the following parks and commons. A, Founder's Park. B, Library Grounds. C, Gilman Park off Bell Avenue, which is struck out. D, Hampton Road Recreation Park. E, Park Street Common. F, Swayze Parkway. G, Brickyard Pond Fields. Add a new section, 910.1. 910.1, dogs are prohibited from the fenced-in ball field confines of the Gilman Park Baseball Field. Dogs are also prohibited from the Gilman Park Pavilion. This prohibit, prohibition shall encompass the entire playing field and pavilion at each location and shall be in effect on a year-round 24-hour location and shall be in effect on a year-round 24-hour, twenty, on a year-round basis, 24 hours per day.
Great, thank you. Before we move on, is there any public comment to this? Let me just look to see if any hands are up. And I don't see any. Okay, and we will take a formal vote on this at our August 10th meeting when we have a full board. Okay, next. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Dean, who is going to speak to Mr. Dave Sharple's, our town planner. Being nominated to participate in New England Municipal Sustainability Network, NEMS. Mr. Dean, would you like to tell us about Mr. Sharple's latest and greatest?
Sure, as, as we all know, Dave's been very active on the sustainability front and we actually have an opportunity as a town to join a New England Municipal Sustainability Network. And it is really a, it looks like a good opportunity to get engaged in more of a regional way into the, into the sustainability network of, of the region. So I'll ask Dave maybe to speak to some of the details of it for you.
Great.
And you could add.
Dave, I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. I thought it would be better to have the headset so to cancel out the noise, but apparently I can't, you can't hear me. Anyway, thank you. I found out about the New England Municipal Sustainability Network a few months ago and I was pretty interested in it because I wanted to establish kind of a regional connection for sustainability professionals and, you know, kind of keep in touch with what they're doing and so forth and inform what we can do and work with them. So I found out about them and I called Peter Britts in Portsmouth, this is one of their co-chairs, and he was gracious enough to set up a conference call, a Zoom meeting last week with him, the other co-chair, Chris Mason, the UNH Sustainability Institute and a couple other active members in the NEMS. And after that, they sent a formal invitation letter to me to become, or on, on behalf of the town of Exeter, to join the network. And I included that in your packets. And I also included an overview of them in the packet, what they do and the membership protocols. I'd be looking to become an active member and represent the town of Exeter in that. And just to read exactly from their overview, the NEMS network is a consortium of municipal staff members from cities and towns across New England, formed in 2010 with the goal of enabling local governments across the region to learn from, support, and help each other as they develop effective actions, policies, and programs to advance sustainability. And as you will note, there are no fees or dues associated with this membership. It doesn't cost the town anything to, to be a member. There might be some, you know, residual travel and training costs if I go down and, you know, if they have in-person conferences and I attend one, but that can be handled under my existing travel and training planning budget. So I think, I believe this network will be invaluable to the town as we move ahead for, you know, more sustainable future. I believe this is a great opportunity. I'd be happy to serve on, you know, as, as the representative for the town of Exeter, but I need a letter of, as it states in the invitation letter, you need a commitment letter from the town. That's why I'm asking the select board this evening to support that. And I provided a motion so the town manager can sign that letter of commitment on behalf of the town of Exeter to become a member of the New England Municipal Sustainability Network.
Okay. Dave, is there a deadline for that?
No.
Okay.
No, there's, there's no deadline. I mean, it's just, you know, each join, they have a fall conference. I already signed up for a couple of webinars that they're having, but they didn't mention any deadline, no.
Okay, no, and I'm sure the board completely supports you, but with Selectwoman Gilman here, not here this evening, you know, we'd like to table that motion for the August 10th meeting, but I didn't know if there was a deadline between now and then that would negatively affect you. Okay, all right.
Well, that's fine.
Great. Well, I think that's fantastic. Congratulations. And hopefully I do, well, I'll, I'll write to the chair tomorrow, but I'd love for you to be able to update the sustainability committee when we meet next week, I believe.
Yeah, I certainly will. I did send them an email because I knew this was, I was going to be on this agenda before we met. So I did send them an email and let them know what I was, you know, a little bit about it, but I'd be happy to update them at the meeting.
Great, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for Dave? Selectman Brown?
Do you need to vote to table it?
Well, it was not in the original motion, so we could do that if somebody wanted to make a motion to table voting to authorize the select board to write a letter endorsing Mr. Sharple's participation.
I'm happy to, we can make the motion to make the nomination or do the letter now. I'm just wondering, you mentioned we're tabling it, but I think tabling requires a vote as well, doesn't it?
Yep, yep.
So I'll just make the motion that we draft a letter to have.
You know, I think, I'm sorry, and I, whatever the wishes of the board, but we had agreed earlier that we weren't going to take any votes tonight without Selectwoman Gilman. And to be fair to the other items on the agenda that we're tabling, I, I just think it's only best to table this one as well unless there's a deadline, which there's not.
Okay, then that's fine too. Can we, can we make a motion that we're tabling everything just so the minutes reflect that we voted to table everything and didn't just decide without a vote?
Right, so I would entertain a motion to table the select board drafting a letter to endorse Mr. Sharple's participation with NEMS. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Selectwoman Cowan, if you could just take a role on that?
Yep, Select Board Member Brown.
Aye.
Select Board Member Roundtree Ola. Aye. Chair.
Aye.
Vice Chair both aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously four zero, thank you. Good job, Dave, thanks. Okay. Late Friday afternoon, I received a letter to, written to me and other members of the board from the law firm of DTC regarding the removal of the marquee at 53 Water Street, which is the Ioka properties. The essence of the letter is that subsequent to the last Historic District Commission meeting of July 16th, 2020, there was an engineer's finding that was rendered and apparently that was dated July 21st, 2020. The engineer's findings were attached to the letter depicting detail in their opinion why the marquee sign is not in a safe condition, given structural problems identified in the building. The finding that was attached concluded that a significant amount of structural reinforcement is necessary to enable the building to safely support the marquee. Given the HDC vote of July 16th, 2020, the Ioka Properties LLC is unable to remove the marquee at the present time. And this letter was issued to us to serve as a notice of the engineer's findings and also to request that the select board authorize removal on a temporary basis of the marquee to be stored off-site to eliminate a possible situation of injury. In lieu of remove, of the board of select, of the select board authorizing that, they requested that the board consider blocking off that area of sidewalk and the corresponding parking spaces. Mr. Dean, it's my understanding that at my request, you had town council speak with Attorney Summers today. And in a moment, if you could just weigh in on, on what council has reported back. But also, I, I don't know if the select board has the purview to consider this request, given that there is a process from the HDC making a determination and then there is a appeal process. So if you could weigh in first on what council has advised and also whether or not this is even a select board issue, and then maybe we can have a conversation from there. I will note that the Chair of the Historic District Commission, Chair Gordon, is online and I would open, open him up for any comments or questions as well. So, Mr. Dean?
Sure. So the board, basically, the, the council for Don Hugh Tucker, who wrote the letter, Sharon Summers, actually spoke with our town council, Naomi Butterfield, today from Mitchell Municipal Group. And basically, my understanding coming out of that conversation is that they will seek further clarification from the HDC regarding just the scope of whether they could do a temporary removal of the marquee to make repairs. So that's, that's one of the question marks that came out of that particular conversation. So that, the expectation is there that that, you know, that that will happen, that it will get referred back over to HDC to, to take up that particular issue. As far as the, the public right of way, obviously the, the select board does control the public right of way in terms of permitting and doing things on the public right of way. So there is some, you know, there is some authority there. And I think what we need to do is find out essentially what, you know, what the HDC feels in terms of the, you know, the, any kind of temporary removal of the sign before we can take a next step with, with anything in particular regarding the, you know, whether it's a buttressing or the safety issue that's been brought, brought up with respect to these letters.
In, in the course of that conversation, to the best of your knowledge, was the word temporary defined? Because temporary can mean a lot of things to a lot of people and if, in fact, it did work out that that portion of sidewalk and road were closed, I mean, I would think that as a town, we want to know what the finite period is rather than just closing it and then just having it stay that way without any activity.
That hasn't been fleshed out yet, so that, that's not yet known at this point.
All right. Chairman Gordon, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to weigh in just to say, in terms of the application that was submitted to the HDC, there, there is also significant work that's going to be done to the facade of the building above the marquee. And really, the ownership returning to the HDC to bring more clarity in terms of the process of construction would be absolutely fantastic. We did make a decision to ask to save the marquee and we understand that with construction going on above it, that it's going to be very hard to protect. If you have new, new openings being cut into masonry and you have precast lintels that you're going to be cutting out and moving, all of this is going to be a very, very extensive construction, which, with a lot of risk to the public right of way below. So I assume they will block off or ask to have the sidewalk and street, corresponding street blocked off for these, for these demolition services as well. But protecting the marquee, having that in place while this demolition is going on is just, there's got to be a construction sequence in place to make sure it's protected. If they present a, a finding that they can't do that safely without, they, they must remove the marquee temporarily to protect it, that's something that we'll have to consider as, as the HDC. Right now, you know, being a licensed architect in New Hampshire, I'm, I'm well aware of all the building codes in terms of snow loads and having cut my teeth in Buffalo, New York, I do know that snow loads are, are something to be considered. And since that time, they've, the dead loads have gone up seven times the amount since I first started my practice. So the fact that that marquee is designed structurally right now, when it was erected in the 1950s and is now, you know, 2020, of course, of course it's out of code, of course structurally it is. And I don't think any self-stamping structural engineer would put a single chain attachment on that marquee today. So the greatest thing is this is now the opportunity to fix it. You have, the, the building on the inside is gutted, you've exposed the structure to it, you have an opportunity to temporarily support the marquee from the exterior and address the attachment to the building in any way, to spread out and distribute the load, to make multiple points of contact to the building. There's multiple things that can be done to help save the structure. What I just don't want to hope is that this is kind of a short circuit of the HDC decision without going through the formal approval process, appeal process to the ZBA to ask that we can't structurally keep this marquee in place. That would be, that would be really our primary concern. Let's see. So we would ask if there is any jurisdiction that the select board has to grant this to them, that we would ask for exactly what you've asked for, the definition of temporary, and ask that it be binding language with the enforcement of the HDC to say that if they do not put it back up in that time, then it would be the same as a zoning ordinance violation of Article Eight from the Historic District Commission. And it would be, you know, come with the subsequent fines with that. If that, if that language is in place, then, then they're inclined to return it. Our fear is that if it comes down, it may never go back up.
So would you, as, as the HDC, would you be willing to entertain hearing the additional testimony and perhaps granting their temporary request? Getting the select board involved at this time?
I don't, I don't see any issue with that. Yeah, certainly. I think we'd want to make sure we get, you know, expert testimony from both sides to see how to do it as safely as possible. I, I know that the, the gross weight that they're at, that they're calling for right now of 6,000 square feet is, you know, 81 square feet times 75 pounds per square foot of snow load. So that's where they're getting the 6,000 and I understand that. But there, there's multiple avenues to be able to approach this and, and we'd be happy to, to hear them.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? I, I do see that we have a member of the public that has a hand up and I'm willing to open this up for a question or a comment. However, I'd like to make clear that the issue at hand here is the letter that the select board received July 24th relative to an engineer's finding and a specific request. I do not want to open this up to public comment as to whether or not one is in favor of keeping the marquee or not. So with that.
Nico, before you open up, can we also just make sure, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as a new select board member, when we have comments, are we only opening up comments to Exeter residents or are we opening up to the public at large?
The, if the, the public comment is opened up to Exeter residents and if there's somebody from outside of Exeter, then the board needs to approve allowing them to speak.
Okay, go for it.
Dan, I think we have a hand up?
Yep, I just unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laurier Couture and I'm spearheading the efforts to save the marquee and I do have information relevant to this.
Laurie, may I just stop you one moment? Are you an Exeter resident?
Oh, I'm not, not anymore. I used to be, I'm a Newmarket resident.
If you would pause for a moment, please, we, we need to discuss as a board, is the board comfortable allowing a non-resident of Exeter to weigh in on this?
I am not.
Madam Vice Chair, would you take a roll call, please?
I'm, I'm sorry, let me cut out. What am I taking a roll call?
On whether or not we're going to allow a non-resident to speak to this?
Okay. Select Board Member Brown.
I'm in favor of it, yes.
Okay, Select Board Member Roundtree Ola.
Okay. Select Board Member Roundtree Ola?
I am not in favor.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Ms. Couture, before you begin, please, again, I'd like to remind you, particularly given your introduction, this is not about whether or not we're in favor or not in favor. That was presented before the HDC properly. This is solely, you know, just your quick thoughts on this letter and what Chair Gordon and the board have discussed.
Absolutely. Today I received an email from Carrie Vaughn of Portsmouth Sign, who did an, her group did an assessment. I never authorized them, just for the record, to touch the marquee or the building in any way, but I sent them 80 years of photographs. And, you know, they had said they were going to do a drive-by. What they stated was that, what Carrie Vaughn stated was that the marquee is actually pretty much permanently affixed to the building. It says any rehab that we would do to the sign would need to be done on-site. That would mean that we would need permission from the property owner to do the work. We would not be removing the sign. As part of that, we believe the sign is built into the framing that is built as part of the building. There are anchors that are visible and mounted to the building. I'm sorry, the anchors that are visible, such as the chain and the bolt, are secondary ways. So in other words, built-in redundancy. So in other words, the marquee is actually held up by steel bars. She said all of this would, of course, take more investigation to confirm. Our suggestion to bring the marquee back to its former glory would be repair dings and dents, repaint to customer-specified colors, convert the internal lighting to LED, replace acrylic faces repaired damage track, replace with new neon in the letters and along the top and bottom of the signboard, including the package housing. The rust and rot appears to be minimal compared to many other signs of that era that we have rehabbed. Without getting all of the fine details ironed out, it looks like the rehab of the sign would cost $25,000, unquote. I also have under good faith the testimony, he has given me this at least three times, somebody who does not wish to be known, unfortunately, he won't give me authorization, but he has extensive experience with Exeter's architectural history. And he also states that there were masonry issues when the marquee, which was installed between 1938 and 41, just want to clarify that, it was early 40s. There was, there were masonry issues where a steel bar had to be driven into the building and into the marquee, making it a permanent fixture. So removal of the marquee on a temporary basis could destroy the marquee as well as the facade. So it's, and it looks like Portsmouth Sign confirmed that today in their letter. Now, I presented all of this to you. I'm sorry, the emails got probably late. I was never informed of this meeting until today, so I had to scramble. I actually have been talking with council as well because we wanted to find out, you know, protect the marquee from being removed on a so-called temporary basis, because we believe that if the marquee is removed, then the owners are going to say, oh, well, look, we can't get it back on the building because it's been mangled or it is irreparable. We want to prevent that, and we would love to move forward with fundraising for Portsmouth Sign so that they could refurbish and fix the marquee on the building and maybe scaffolding in the meantime, or support beams could be put under the marquee. If the board and the HDC has any concern about the marquee not being stable during construction, though those reinforcements could be made, and they're very common in construction situations with scaffolding can hold thousands of pounds, support beams, we see it all the time. And also, the parking area is already blocked off anyway because of the large dumpster, so that wouldn't be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, same thing. I see one hand up, but there's no name there. Do you see that, Dan?
Yep, they are.
So whoever has the Samsung is their
Right.
name, Samsung Galaxy?
That's me. I'm sorry, I'm new to Zoom.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening. With whom are we speaking?
My name is Michelle Norton. I'm a proud Blue Hawk graduate. I no longer live in this town, but I am moving back in about three weeks.
Okay, welcome, welcome back prematurely. We do need to decide as a board.
Of course.
Select Woman Cowan, would you just do a quick roll call?
Selectman Brown?
Hi, hold on.
Select Woman Roundtree Ola? No. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll say yes.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle. And again, this is relative to the letter that we're discussing, not whether or not you're in favor of the marquee or not, okay?
Absolutely. And I just want to thank you guys because I had a little bit of a panic attack having watched the HCC thing on the 17th. And the word temporary really scared me, so I just wanted to say thank you, guys, because you both identified that as a particular issue word without having any kind of begin date, end date. And I sort of thank you, guys, for doing due diligence.
Thank you. So coming full circle, Chairman Gordon, you will entertain at a future date additional evidence regarding this, and it would go back to the normal protocols of this type of application?
I believe it would. However, we don't have any jurisdiction in terms of means and methods. We only have historically appropriate parts of our application. So that we've already made a judgment on. And as it related to means and methods, it would be more advisory at this point to doing so. But it would be in a way to uphold our original decision.
Okay. And then their course of appeal would be through the ZBA?
If they wish to do so, yes.
Okay. Mr. Dean, is there anything outstanding that I've missed?
We have two more hands in the participant section.
That's right. There are two more. I see them.
Yep. Dan, can we work on helping them?
Hello?
Good evening. With whom are we speaking?
Hi, my name is Maraid Carr. I am an Exeter resident. I live on Four Cross Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to reiterate what Laurie said earlier about how it is very possible that if the Ioka marquee were to be taken down, it would be irreparably damaged and not be able to be put back on. So just if there could be some language about that, specific language about the fact that research should be taken to see if it would be, if that damage would happen, were it to be removed. Because if that's the case, I don't, I just, I worry about any vote to have it, allow it to be temporarily taken off without first knowing whether or not it would be possible to put it back on.
Great, thank you. And as we get to our last caller, again, the select board is not voting on anything regarding this this evening. We're discussing correspondence we received, and again, it would be up to Chairman Gordon at a later HDC date to allow this further discussion. I see we have attorney, is this presumably Attorney Summers from DTC?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And are you, are you an Exeter resident, Attorney Summers?
No, I'm not. However, I represent Ioka Properties LLC.
Okay. Is the board comfortable hearing from Attorney Summers?
Do you want me to call the roll?
Please.
Selectman Brown?
Yes.
Select Woman Roundtree Ola? Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I just, sorry, I was having some technical problems getting on in the list. I just wanted to say, first of all, that I appreciate the board taking the opportunity tonight to consider this. I also appreciate the comments of Chairman Gordon that he's willing to discuss the matter with us. Just to put this in context, we, the purpose of this letter really is to put the, put everyone on notice of this information that we recently came by. And it was that we discussed with the HDC at the time, the structural difficulties associated with this property. But this engineer's report came to us since the HDC. And we felt it was very important, both as property owners and as owners of property in Exeter, to bring this attention to the necessary people. What we're looking to do, and with the assistance of the town attorney and with the town manager today, we will contact the HDC to get clarification on whether the decision which they made precludes us from having a temporary removal of the sign. While any kind of, you know, further action is taken on the decision, whether that be an appeal or whether that be actually moving forward with the permit process. And we raised that because there really is a sense of urgency here with having some kind of decision made as to whether or not we can do that or if that's not possible, to come up with some alternative arrangement simply by providing support or buttressing that kind of thing underneath the sign and then blocking off the passageway. So I do appreciate the various issues and the concerns that have been raised tonight about the mechanics of how that's all going to be done. But I do think it's important for this board and hopefully the HDC to understand that the impetus of this whole thing is really one of safety. And we just want to make sure that while the HDC process, as well as any potential appeal process is unfolding, that the situation is safe. And so we would, hopefully, we can get in front of the HDC fairly soon. I know their next meeting is not until the 20th. In order to have this discussion with them and come up with some clarification and some discussion about the possibility of temporary removal. So with that, again, I appreciate your time and hopefully we can move forward.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Summers. Okay. Any further discussion from the board, Mr. Dean?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, at this point.
All right.
I do, I have not yet had a chance to talk with the building inspector, which I do plan on doing tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Any further comment or questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, of course, Chairman Gordon.
A stopgap between the next HDC meeting and the select board offering protection of the right of way underneath would be, I don't believe that the HDC would be in any conflict of allowing temporary bracing from the outside, from the public right of way. However, we can't grant the authorization to do that. But that would be supporting the marquee in its current place, and it would be protecting the public as well.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dean, after speaking with Mr. Eastman tomorrow, perhaps we can revisit Chairman Gordon's suggestion at our next meeting, if that will be a temporary fix.
Yeah, we could.
At the next HDC meeting.
We can, we can queue that up.
Okay. I know, and I think the board, rest of the board would be interested in what Mr. Eastman has to say.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Chairman Gordon, thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, Mr. Dean, we'll move to the COVID-19 updates. And Chief Wilkin, you've been sitting patiently along with Ms. Roy, but we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was great to hear from Dr. Ryan tonight, and it's our pleasure to continue to work with the schools. And James Murray is always an asset that we loan, and he uses a lot of the same data points we do. In fact, he made some great points tonight that I'll continue to reiterate too. And we share the data points with Russ and other members of Public Safety every day, every evening with Exeter, so we're making good decisions. On that note, he mentioned, and I'll just reinforce, Rockham County and the town of Exeter and the surrounding communities have remained steady in kind of plodding along, but doing a great job managing the positive tests, what we're seeing, and ultimately fatalities in some cases. But we've really seen a plateau, some really minor numbers, numbers that are often less than 20. We were frightened this weekend. When Friday and Saturday, we saw spikes in the 40s and 50s just for our region. But they dropped right off today. As a matter of fact, total in the state in Hampshire was seven, kind of the fewest we've seen in months. So it's hard to plot a line when you have huge numbers and very small numbers. But we're seeing trends, and we're tracking the trends. And just like you mentioned, the schools, the state is making those same decisions on public health and reopening based on long-term trends, not short-term spikes. But we see some great progress there. Exeter has had three residents test positive, so our total is now 30. We continue to monitor five people within town that we know are within the 21-day threshold of test positive to the By area mass is seeing a return to normalcy. What I mean now, Susan not only runs, but revenue, and the revenue is beginning to come back in line. And it's way too early to tell if by the end of the year we'll be back where we want to be or we have been. But it's certainly looking in a much more favorable direction than it was in March and April. So we're optimistic that we'll make our mark and be able to continue to support the town that way. By area mass PPE has remained steady. Our vendors have been able to keep up with our demand. So as we use it, we order it in very small quantities. And it's been refreshing over the last two months that it seems like the vendors are doing a much better job. And kind of the hoarding has abated, and we're able to maintain our cash here in town. We were notified today, and I know Paul Scafidi spoke to it very early in the meeting tonight. But I did speak with emergency management, and we have organized the pickup of all the materials that the town will get. I know we're going to commit our department resource, the emergency management, and our time will be the 19th, we'll be picking up everything at the Epping Park and Ride. We'll commit to pick up. And now it's a matter, and I know Pam and others are working on what to do with it for that short, let's just call it, two-week interim with a truckload of supplies. Where do we put it so it remains ready when we have to deploy it? And of course, there'll be some leftover for November. On a somber note, if you will, I don't want to tell bad news, but James Murray informed me today that he and a couple of his children took ill this weekend, and as a precaution, he's quarantining himself to home. He had a COVID test. The results have not come back. We expect him by the end of the week. But he is still available via text, phone, and email, and he wants to remain engaged. A huge asset. We spoke to it in the past, and he's been invaluable to me and to the town. So we hope that James has a speedy recovery, and this is much ado about nothing. But he felt it was necessary to take the precautions of quarantine. He remains at home on that. On the financial front, we put in a request out around your last select board meeting. I was unable to attend, I apologize. But on the 13th, we finished up our request to claim the Gulfer Municipal Relief Fund monies. We anticipate a positive return of that. And I was notified early, late last week, that FEMA has processed our first application for reimbursement. And we should see those funds soon, and we're in the process of putting a second application for reimbursement in for costs incurred from May through about now. Yeah, the last one I want to make, and it just reiterates what Dr. Ryan said, it's through a lot of hard work, not only town residents, community, and state, that we are where we are, wearing a mask, not always easy, not always popular, social distancing, minimizing trips, all the things you hear, and you continue to hear from Public Safety. If we continue that and the vigilance of that, I think we can continue our plateau. I listen to all the same doctors and experts that you do. I think we'd be remiss in saying that we don't expect a bit of a spike or additional cases come fall and into the early winter months. But boy, if we can continue what we're doing, I think we can really abate that, and we can minimize that and allow schools to open and our communities to return to some normalcy sooner than later. So I do applaud again you and the board for your decisions and your actions you've taken, taken the lead on this. And we will certainly follow as Public Safety. Thank you again tonight. I don't know, it's getting late. Entertaining any questions? Entertain any questions, and then let Michelle move on.
Chief Wilkin, thank you for your update. And if you would, please extend our best wishes to James and his and his children for a speedy recovery.
I will, sir. Thank you.
Any questions of Chief Wilkin from the board? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Hi, Melissa, good evening.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Good.
So we would also like to echo the sincere thanks to Dr. Ryan and the school committee because they have allowed our Care Kids program to be in Lincoln Street School, as well as using the parking lot for our concerts and our movies. So we're very thankful, they've been an amazing asset. To that effect, they did reach out to us this week to see if there was any way we could extend the Care Kids program. It's originally supposed to be ending on August 14th. We are working with the staff. Unfortunately, most of our staff are college students, and even if they are going back fully, they do have classes. So we're not sure we're going to be able to do that, but we are looking into that, and we'll let them know as soon as we know more. The biggest thing for today is talking about fall sports and whether the board has an appetite for us to look into more. So we did receive guidelines from the state that do allow fall sports to happen. There are a lot of rules, a lot of regulations. After a lot of discussion within the department, we would like to, and excuse me, we put a survey out to the community, we had 200, over 200 people respond. About 73% of the people that responded are interested in some form of fall sports, which would be either coed soccer or flag football with restrictions. So that being said, after lots of discussion, we would like to propose a shortened five-week season for both soccer and flag football. We would increase the size of the teams to about 10 or 12, and they would have 30 to 40 minutes of skills and drills, and then about 50 to 60 minutes of an intersquad scrimmage. So they wouldn't be playing against any other teams. They would be practicing and then playing against each other for the competition portion of their practice. So they would be able to minimize the risk, just like we do with the Care Kids program, that they're not playing other teams each weekend. It's a big, big change, we realize that, but we feel pretty strongly that it's the best way for us to go forward in the safest environment. So we wanted to bring that to you guys and see if you were interested in us pursuing that.
I'll open that up to the board. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. I think anything that allows for kids to be active in athletics and any sort of social circumstances that keeps them safe is, you know, that's the best that we can do, and I'm I'm all for it.
Selectman Brown?
In favor.
Vice Chair, Selectwoman Cowan.
Um, I would be very interested in hearing the proposal.
So the guidelines from the state do allow us to let them have competitions with other teams. We're just not comfortable right now. So we think the best way that we do that is if we increase each individual team just a little bit, they can scrimmage against each other, they can still have some fun, they still do team-building activities and that kind of stuff. But it wouldn't allow the virus to spread throughout the league because they would only be playing with the the children on their individual pod, basically, a little bit like the concept the schools are doing.
Melissa, do you want to speak to the temperature screening process and whether you would need additional staff to be able to do that?
Yeah, so one of the things that we would need to do is hire a, basically, a field supervisor who would be helping with the temperature screenings at the beginning of each of the programs. They would be helping us with social distancing, and we would be having signs on all the fields. We would also be marking each field with field paint, circles on the ground where the kids could stand to make sure that they're practicing the appropriate social distancing, as well as the fans or their parents that they wanted to come and watch. But this field supervisor, which could be made up of a few different people to to cover all the days, would help us with that and report back to us, as well as Greg, David, and I taking turns being at the fields here and there.
Thank you, Melissa. And I agree with my my fellow board members, and I particularly concur with Selectwoman Cowan. I'd like to see more of the details as you pursue this. You know, of interest is that, you know, James Murray, our health officer, has approved of your initial plan and agrees that this would be the safest way to do it. So, you know, I'm comfortable, if James is comfortable, with at least taking the next step. The temperature checks and asking a series of questions of all of the kids involved, and the parents who are coaching as well, and anybody affiliated with, you know, the the team is a must. And coming up with, you know, interesting ways to social distance. You know, for instance, maybe if you have 10 kids on a team getting 10 frisbees, having the coach mark them out six feet with their names, and setting up their equipment there. And, you know, I know that with the school superintendent Ryan, all the way down, he's going to have a hard time, especially with the young kids, trying to get them to stay six feet apart, is challenging. However, the initial plan that you've submitted, along with James endorsing that, I think we'd like to hear more about this. So if you could look into it further, maybe find out what some of the other towns are doing?
Absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you.
No problem.
I'll just throw in, Nico, since you mentioned it, perhaps less so what other towns are doing, but look at countries that are doing and keeping their numbers down, and also increasing the number of activity for students. Because I think we are behind in a lot of ways of what those who are successful in keeping social while also keeping safe. So perhaps we need to, you know, step outside the box, and instead of looking at our neighboring towns, go elsewhere.
Sure, absolutely. So we, like I said, are are looking to actually make more stringent rules than the guidelines allow for us, because we're just wanting to be safer than what they're allowing for. So that is, we would love to get that information, we'll bring that back to you at the next select board meeting.
And I can certainly, you know, pull a little research out myself and contact people that I know globally, because I do have friends who are living in Hong Kong and other, and we have discussions about it. So if I can get that information for you on a more baseline level, I'll send that to you and Greg.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So how is the Care Kids program working?
It's great. The kids are having a good time. I could do without the really, really hot heat, but they're doing great in their sprinkler, and the parents are really happy. We've got a lot of communication going on. I think that's making everyone feel better. And, yeah, I'm really happy that we were able to service the families that we were able to. So it's definitely a different summer, but it's going really well. I just got about six different emails about volcanoes with with videos, so hopefully those will be posted online tomorrow.
Great, thank you. And thank you for everything that you and Greg and the department have done. And I know these families that are using our program are very appreciative of your efforts. So if if you don't have any other updates, I'm not sure when you came on the meeting, but we are going to, we've already voted to table the vote on the repair and also the permit that you're here for. So I just needed to make sure you knew that, so you weren't sticking around.
Sure. So I didn't know if there was going to be discussion on the permit, so I wasn't sure. So if there's no discussion, then I'm happy to sign off. I just didn't know if there was going to be discussion.
Unless the board has an appetite for discussion, I really would love to have the full board here, as well as anybody else that wanted to speak to it. Is the board in agreement with that? I don't think we have to vote, just if we're all in agreement. Okay, I don't hear any disagreements, so. Selectwoman Cowan, I'm sorry.
We're all in agreement, no vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Melissa.
Have a great night. Thank you so much.
You too.
Bye.
Goodbye. Mr. Dean, as part of your update, if you could address, just that I know you were going to talk about how the continuing reopening of town office is going, but also the recent court decision that came down, the ruling against the individuals that sued the city of Nashville over the mask mandate. And what that means for us as a community revisiting a mask mandate, should the board have appetite? And also, what are some of the other communities around Exeter or the size of Exeter that you know of doing as a result of that court order?
Okay. I'll start with the last part first. I'm not, I will check as far as if there are any, if there's any new news as a result of the court order. I know there was some activity in Portsmouth, as we know, from their city council, that being a city form of government, a little different than Exeter. One of the things that I have learned is, in terms of the RSA that would speak to potential mask ordinance, if you will, or a regulation, the RSA that we're looking at is 147, which is a public health RSA. And in that regard, that's actually similar to the town of Salem, what they looked at when they contemplated a mask, a mask order, if you will. And so that that is really the avenue, as I understand it, that if the board wanted to pursue something more significant than what is out there now, that's that's the route you would go. There is a process there where the health officer would make a recommendation formally to the to the board, and then there would be a publishing of the regulations and a hearing and so forth. But that is an avenue that town council feels is a is a potentially viable avenue to go if the board wanted to revisit the issue.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's really all I had on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And town offices are continuing to run with no issues, no problems?
Town offices have been running without issues. We have, we have had people in the building on a fairly regular basis now. I'm happy to report that most of them, all of them, actually, from what I can see, having been around the building, are are wearing masks and respecting that, so that's good to see. We are, where masks are not, you know, being worn, obviously, we're not requiring them in the offices, but in the in the common areas we are, and also making sure that our guards are working and so forth, and that all seems to be going pretty well from what what I can see. So we have had have had a couple of hiccups, as you can imagine. I think as Dr. Ryan pointed, you know, sometimes you do forget your mask, but I think by and large, people have been very good and respectful of one another and have really worked at at that. And we've got more than enough hand sanitizer, and the masks are being stocked every day. So we're seeing people that don't have them take advantage of the ones that we're offering. So it seems to be going good.
Okay. Selectwoman Rontrioloff.
Just real quick question, since we were talking about elections prior, do we have any signs in the town office reminding people that absentee ballots are available and that they should or are encouraged to grab them? I'm just thinking, you know, the more information that we have visually accessible to people, the better. And perhaps when people do come to town, you know, it's sort of like, think the McDonald's thing, like, do you want to upgrade that? Do you want to also maybe grab an absentee ballot while you're here registering your car? I don't know. So, you know, I'm trying to help people as much as possible so that we're not in the trenches come a week or two before Election Day. Throwing it out there is something to consider.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll we'll check it, but we do have signage, but we'll, we can always do more on that front. And I know that that's something that we're trying to do more of consciously, so it's a good suggestion.
Thank you. And I'm happy to hear, Mr. Dean, that everybody is wearing a mask as they come into town office.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dean before we move on to regular business? All right, great. Again, we don't have any exemptions, abatements, or credits. We have the the motion and the permit that we are tabling for the next meeting. So we will move to town manager's report. Mr. Dean, do you have anything further?
Note, just that we're in the throes of working on the CIP very diligently, and our FY '21 budget instructions, getting those out the door. So a lot of things, financial as of late, that we are picking away at.
And noting the calendar, it should be budget time, the BRC is getting ready to gear up, presumably?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, their first meeting will be August 12th.
August 12th, okay, great. And can we expect the report from Finance Director soon?
Yes, hopefully the next meeting. That's what we're angling toward. They had, they had an issue as well in the finance office last week. I mean, we're not without our challenges from time to time, and it was a, it was a, I will say it was more of a scare than a than a real, than anything else. And so luckily, we came through that, but it required a day out, and we were rebounding. So hopefully, next meeting, that that's what we're shooting for.
Okay, great, thanks. And just a reminder to the to the select board members, the Budget Recommendations Committee, you know, can be attended by all of us. And it's really, it's a great way to follow along the budget process. So if it fits into your schedule, it's always great to attend those meetings, however however long they may be, and some of them go long. But, great. So we'll segue to Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Rontrioloff?
No real updates, other than the housing plan, the Housing Committee was supposed to present this week, but just needed an extension. So they'll be here with their presentation August 10th, is our next meeting.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, and the Flazy Parkway trustees will be meeting on Wednesday at 5:30 PM in person on the Parkway. So if anyone would like to attend that, they'll be there. And Renee, I'm so sorry, I've forgotten her last name, who came on to present our last meeting, will be there as well for the walkthrough to discuss the project that we had discussed with Eric for the memorial. Other than that, nada.
Terrific. And I'm looking forward to the to the housing presentation. Nancy keeps.
It's going to be great. It's going to be.
It's fun.
There'll be sparkles in the whole nine. It is.
All right, thank you. Selectman Brown?
Two meetings since our last meeting, the 14th at 9:00 AM with the Communications Committee. The agenda and minutes are online. The main discussion there was figuring out a survey for, you know, website and other digital assets for the town. And on the 16th, I had a meeting with the Facilities Committee at 4:00 PM, agenda, as well as online minutes, I don't think are there yet. But the main highlight from that was Department of Public Works, complex planning discussion.
Great. Thank you. Vice Chair Cowan?
Yeah, this past Thursday, we had a planning board meeting, which was very long. We assessed the Gateway Project and heard from an independent expert on on wetlands. And it was a fascinating meeting. I do not, the meetings are not, the minutes are not available yet, but we also determined that we needed to add an additional meeting to our schedule to speed things up. Rather slow.
Great, thank you. And I did not have any committee meetings, there's a Sustainability Committee meeting next Tuesday. Next, we have correspondence. The first was an update from Pam on the applicants so far for the Exeter Police Stakeholders Committee. And I believe Vice Chair Cowan and Selectman Brown, I don't know if you've had any conversations or where we're at there real quick, but we probably start, I would assume, interviewing applicants in the next few weeks?
I think that that would be great. I have communicated with the chief about, you know, sort of, we've had some discussions about who out, like, what other voices we're looking for. And when we do not have a full slate of applicants yet, so if you are interested, please apply and and get that in, because, and I don't think that we'll be able to interview everybody in one meeting.
No.
There are going to be a lot of folks. But the goal is to get the meetings started probably the end of September.
Okay, great. That's exciting. Thank you. And last piece of correspondence from the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank was a letter to our Finance Director indicating that the Bond Bank had held another successful bond sale and that the true successful bond sale and that the true interest cost for a 15-year loan is approximately 1.32%. Mr. Dean, do you have anything else to add on behalf of Doreen?
Uh, I will just add that you'll notice, uh, the bond bank percentages as far as what is out there right now is, uh, I suppose not unexpected, a five-year issue is .57%, 10 years .86, 15-year 1.37. So, um, I know, I know things are a little different right now these days, but in terms of actually our bond issue for the library and for the groundwater, surface water assessment, which is what this is, uh, we certainly got a very good rate.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, looking at our calendar, uh, we don't typically do this, but given that, uh, towards the end of the month, we will be running into the Labor Day weekend as well as immediately there, the day after is the election day. Um, unless there's any objection, I'd like to propose adding an extra meeting in August. Uh, the reason being is we're already scheduled for August 10th and August 24th. And if we wait from the 24th, we would not meet again until the 14th of September. Um, so I propose that we meet the 10th, the 24th is scheduled and also on August 31st. Uh, any objection from the board?
No objection, but I may not be in state for the 24th.
Okay. Would you be? And we're in unique times, uh, Selectwoman Rontrioloff, some questions. Can you zoom in?
Later. It's legit. We are supposed to travel to this state. It's Vermont, so unless something changes, we're supposed to be in Vermont. But I don't know what the Wi-Fi, um, accessibility is, so that I'm just putting it out there as a heads up in case I'm choppy. But I will at least try to call in if, if nothing else to see what works best.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, Selectman Brown, any objections?
None.
Okay, all right. Um, Vice Chair Cowan? Okay, and I did, I, uh, full disclosure, I did run this by, uh, Selectwoman Gilman tonight when she called earlier and she had no objections either. So, Mr. Dean, if we could post August 10th, August 24th, August 31st and September 14th for the next four select board meetings?
We will do that.
Okay. Um, so we, I, Paul, we're going to have a busy meeting on the 10th. Um, you know, we'll take up, uh, the matters that we did not vote on tonight. We do have the, um, the housing presentation, the budget presentation from, from Doreen, uh, just to start. So, um, thank everybody again for their patience, um, and let's continue to stay well. Any other discussion before I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Two items.
Yes, go ahead, Selectman Brown.
The one with the email sent to us by, um, Exeter resident, uh, Marnie Romel about the monarch butterflies. Um, just wanted to raise that to our attention that there's an issue of, um, extinction with the monarchs, I guess, the levels are so low. And she was requesting that we would have our, um, in public spaces, not mowing or pulling milkweeds from June to October. So I don't know if we want to address that, sort of a timely issue.
I think probably the best course of action would be to connect them with Parks and Rec.
Yes, I noticed we got that email earlier this afternoon, so it's, again, I, I didn't have complete time to check in with Mr. Dean on that, so.
Right, I think that's in Public Works or Parks and Rec?
Might be, might be DPW. We will look at exactly what the request is. I haven't had a chance to get all the way through that. It sounds familiar, like we've received it before, but I'll, I'll look at it.
Okay. And then to separate from that, um, it's conducting of the meetings. I do have a concern that the length of the meetings is making them inaccessible to residents. So I would really like to suggest, um, time limits on presentations and time limits on public comment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second. Seeing no discussion, Selectwoman Cowan, could you take a roll for us?
Selectman Brown?